Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for being here. What a great opportunity for us to be here. And I'd like to call to order our meeting of June 24th. And for the record, it is 6:40. If you'll call, roll, please.
Mayor Barone?
Present.
Councilmember Peralta?
Here.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Cantu?
Here.
Councilman Cantu, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Councilwoman?
Oh, they moved the tab.
Reclaiming target.
Wrong side. Sorry, wrong side.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we'll just remain standing, I always like to honor a moment of silence for those in our community and the health of our community, that we will continue to grow, grow in a fashion that we can all grow together, and those that have passed and those that have protected, so that we continue to be free in our community. Thank you. Council, we have approval of the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bellis, I know we have, under presentations, we have that 90-day report. Is it something that I know we have a number of people in the audience that probably are wishing to speak? Is it something you want to, we want to go ahead and?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I would ask with the indulgence of the council, since this is not time-sensitive at all, and in fact, the entire presentation will appear in the Thursday edition of the Taos News, that it be a matter postponed to the end of our agenda tonight, so that the people that are here that want to speak on various issues can do that. And if we have time, we can hear it. If not, we can carry it to the next meeting.
Okay. So with that said...
I amend my recommendation.
To move that to the end of the agenda, council?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a second to that? Second? Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
So we have approval of the minutes, May 27th, 2014, regular meeting minutes, council?
Move for approval.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion, if needed, not call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
So as we move on, we did amend the agenda, so we'll move on to item eight, citizens' forum, citizens wishing to speak shall have the opportunity to do so for five minutes. As people come up, just be aware that there is a light, there is a yellow warning light, and then there is a red light. And so at that time, if you would give us, you know, kind of cut it off, and we'll go from there. So again, I know there was a number of people that were wanting to speak. Let's listen to, I know there's a couple of people from the hospital here, we'll take those on first, if we can. Walter?
How are you doing this evening?
Real good. And you might have to pull that mic forward to you, so that people can hear.
Okay. And I have a copy of the statement.
You can hand it to the chief, and he'll be glad.
Okay. And I'll make it brief. I actually won't go through the whole piece that you've just received. But my name is Walter Brennan. I am one of the vice presidents of the hospital, the union at the hospital, Holy Cross. And I wanted to address you about some issues that I think are important, that need to be worked on collaboratively by our community. First of all, I just want to say thank you very much for listening to what I have to present tonight. And especially, I want to reach out to Councilmember Peralta, former Councilmember Silva, who's not here, obviously, and also Mayor Barone, who have attended some of these task force meetings that we have established over this past year to address some of the issues that have been at the hospital. And going forward, what we're concerned with is that still decisions are being made behind closed doors, and people are not really being involved in a collaborative process to make the best decisions for the hospital. Because of that, certain things have occurred in colluding outsourcing of jobs from our community to groups that are not here in the community, including management groups that run the hospital and are now being brought in to run the doctors program at the hospital, which is decreasing the number of doctors that we actually have serving our patients. And we feel that part of this is creating a less of a good service to our people of our community. And that's where their concerns lie, for the most part. So one of the issues that, as I was saying with the outsourcing, is the revenues are leaving our community when we choose to bring in outside management groups. And we feel that we have the talent here, in this community, to run this hospital efficiently and effectively, or having a different structure than what is currently made in terms of the process. And we want to create or bring that open more, rather than just continue on with the same thing that has been occurring, where as in the CEO has resigned, and we are in the process of looking for another CEO, and we've already been told that Quorum, our management group that is currently running the hospital, is the same one taking over this process in terms of finding a new CEO, which we feel that they are part of the issue where there isn't a collaboration. They're not working with the people who are actually providing and delivering the care to the community members. And as part of that, we think that there needs to be an independent analysis of both the structure and the financial aspects at the hospital, so that a true accounting of what's going on there is done. And we, part of what we, the reason why I'm coming here tonight is that we are going to be making a presentation at the task force meeting, which is next week at 6:30 on Wednesday evening, and I believe that's July 2nd. But we wanted to bring this to your attention now, so that you have a chance to sort of talk about it. We're actually going to email the proposals that we are going to be actually delivering to the task force. We're going to send you all a copy of that on Tuesday, by Tuesday at the latest, so that you have a chance to be looking over these things. And we'd like to invite you to that meeting, if possible. I understand that if more than three of you, or three or more of you come to the meeting, then it, obviously, it changes possible structures in terms of, you know, making announcements to, that you have a quorum of people, of members at that meeting, so it, you know, in terms of announcing the meeting and whatnot. But as many of you that can come to that meeting would be appreciated, just because we feel that we need to involve all the parties in deciding the future of the healthcare in our community, and not just a very small, select group. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Brennan, thank you.
Yes.
Did you say Wednesday at 6:30?
Wednesday at 6:30, yes.
And do we know of hand if...
That's July 2nd, correct?
Correct, yes.
I'm sorry.
I plan on attending that, so...
Okay.
Average presentation after time commission meeting today, so very good.
Okay.
And actually, that is at 6 o'clock, not 6:30. So just want to correct that.
Actually...
It is at 6 o'clock.
Okay, because usually it's been...
Confirmed and everything's...
Okay, because usually it's been at 6:30, so...
It is at 6 o'clock.
So 6 o'clock might stand?
Yes.
Yeah, it is at 6. I put it in my phone.
Okay.
Can...
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can you just briefly speak on the hospitalist group Apogee? How that transition has, or is going to affect? Is it still taking place?
It is. The decision was made. A contract has been signed with Apogee. It's going from a model of where, right now, we have all physicians that are hospitalists, to a program where there's two hospitalists and four physicians, or, sorry, two physicians and four nurse practitioners. They, I don't know specifically what date they, that program will be instituted, but...
May I? I think I know a few more of the details.
If you'll state your name for the record, please.
My name is Gina O'Hara. I'm a clinical pharmacist at the hospital. And what my understanding is, is that Apogee is going to be starting, taking over when the hospitalists who now are on board will be resigning, or have left or retired at the end of August. So they'll be beginning in September. And the hospitalists that are left, two of them are Dr. Basset and Dr. Hara Mio, and they have chosen, not so far, to sign with Apogee, so their contract ends on August 28th. So that is, to the best of my knowledge, when Apogee would be beginning.
I think I'd like a little more history on what you guys know about Apogee, as well too, if and what you know. So if we could set up a meeting, maybe sometime next week, to discuss further in detail what that means, and what that means to the loss of local physicians to the hospital.
Yeah. I would just like to, if I may, try to open the door to the hospitalists possibly speaking with you. I think they would know a lot more details than we would on that.
Good. Rick, if we could set up a meeting, maybe sometime next week with them?
Sure. And we'll issue a notice of potential quorum for the meeting on July 2nd as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Gina, did you have, I know you were on the list, too? Did you want...
My name, again, is Gina O'Hara. And I also wanted to just voice my concern and reiterate that the outsourcing and contracting of services that have happened over the last few years is very concerning. And my personal heartfelt opinion is that we have an enormous amount of talent and education that we're now hemorrhaging by these companies coming in and basically gutting programs. And I don't believe, I've seen savings, which was the initial objective, to my understanding, and I don't see a better service. The one now with Apogee coming in, we now have lost all but one potential of our seven hospitalist over the last year and a half. So these people are either born and raised in Taos, and have gone and become educated and come to serve the healthcare needs of the community and the members and family that they love, and being outsourced to strangers. Do I know if these strangers are going to be good healthcare workers? Probably they are, but I don't think their ties or their motivations will, or can be the same, because they're from outside. And the monies for the management groups of these individuals themselves are going to places like Tennessee and Arizona and other places. So I just don't get it. And I guess I need more people to be involved in this, for me to feel secure that the hospital is going in the right direction, and those more people is the community themselves and our elected officials. So I really appreciate your involvement and support in trying to manage the course and the future of our healthcare for Taos County. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
And I'm glad, I'm glad you mentioned that, just because of the fact that I feel too, I guess, as hospitalists, it goes much deeper than just providing care as a hospitalist. It's community involvement as well, too, and knowing the community you operate within. So to bring somebody in from the outside, not really knowing the demographics of what our Hispanic Native American population face as far as health issues, doesn't bring that sensitivity as well to the table. Not saying that it can't happen, but at the same point, I have concerns and issues with that. Being that it's a community-run hospital, I have a lot to say about it, and you'll hear me a lot more vocal in the upcoming weeks about it, just because I'm not a huge fan of Apogee, just based on their model, what it shows online. And I don't understand how Taos Health Systems, you know, where their investigative information came from with regards to Apogee.
One thing that I hear constantly is that that's the national trend of things in healthcare. And what I'd like to bring to light, from my years, and I've been in New Mexico for going on 30 years, and was born and raised educationally and professionally at UNM, and UNM hospitals, is that we have a system within our state in which we are the leader of the country of rural medicine. The university hospital is in the top 10 teaching hospitals in the nation, and the family practice school of medicine department is number one in the nation in rural medicine. And so I just don't understand also, again, why we're looking at other places for what they're doing when we're already the leading, leading the pack. So, and many of the doctors and our hospitalists are products of that education and that environment.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? None?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So we'll go to Patty and Terry. Were you wanting to make a presentation? No? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I thought you're... So is there anybody else? I know there's a lot of people here that would like to speak about the park. Is there somebody here that wants to speak not about the park? Be so we don't...
[laughter]
So everybody else is wanting to speak about the park. So again, I know there's a number of people here, and we just want to be respectful of each other. So again, and who would want to start? Go ahead. Just your name for the record.
My name is Gabriel Chavez. I'm a lifelong resident of this area, except for a few years that I was in college and working for the US Department of State in Latin America, and then I spent a career in the military. I spent a career in the military. I'm retired from the United States Air Force. I'm here to address your recent decision to change the name of Kit Carson Park. I'm very disturbed by it, and I am even appalled by it, because I feel that you made a decision based on malicious and erroneous information about a great American, a great general, as a matter of fact. And so I feel very dismayed about that. He was called a killer and a, I'm talking about Kit Carson, a killer and a murderer. And when you accepted that information in making your decision, you accepted the fact that everybody who had served in the military throughout the length of this country, you have branded them as murderers and killers. That includes me. I believe that there's a big misconception about this man. People know maybe some of the bad stuff that he might have done, but they really don't know all the good stuff that he did. And what they don't understand is that most of the things that he did, he did at the behest of the United States government, as a scout and as a military officer. He guided the Army of the West under General Kearney. He was not, he did not volunteer for that. He was drafted to do that. He was drafted to guide the Fremont expeditions. He was enlisted to command the Union forces that defeated the southern rebel forces in different battles around Socorro, New Mexico. He then was enlisted and ordered to subdue the Navajo, which he did. They were very difficult, and I suppose that he could have massacred all of them, but he did not, because that's not who he was. He instead subdued them by deprivation, starvation. They finally gave in, because they didn't have anything to eat. He later on became a, or I was going to say, at the hands of some other military officer, those people would not have done nearly, as well as they actually ended up doing. He did not kill very many people. Well, he didn't kill anybody. It was his troops that did it. He became an Indian agent, and as such, he showed his concern for the Native American people. He himself was married to a Native woman, had a child. That lady was killed by, during an Indian raid by some other tribe in the plains areas. They had a little child who was sent to be raised by his relatives in Poughkeepsie, Virginia, I believe. General Carson died at the military hospital in Lyons, Colorado, mostly from injuries that he suffered as a scout and as a military officer. He, his wife preceded him in death from childbirth. They were both buried here in Taos, and we have always been proud and honored to have them here, because they were residents of this area. I think that, or I implore that you reconsider your decision and restore to this great man and to all the people from this county, including people from the Taos pueblo, who have sacrificed, given their maximum. Otherwise, we will continue to think that you believe that they are murderers and killers. I do implore you to make that consideration. I am very dishonored by your actions. My son is dishonored by your actions. Many relatives of mine are dishonored by your actions. And all the people from this area, including the pueblo, who have served honorably and with valor, and who have, many of them who have given their life for our country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Travis.
Next? Please.
I've only done this once before, and I use this mic. Is that over?
That's fine.
Everyone hear me? Good evening. My name is Martin Jaggers. I'm president of the Board of Directors for the Kit Carson Holman Museum. I wanted to thank Mayor Barone and the council for holding this open forum this evening. And I wanted to read a statement, a brief statement, actually, on behalf of the museum. By the way, this is also directed to the people of Taos, the members of Taos and Pueblo as well. The mission of the Kit Carson Holman Museum is to inform the public about the life, accomplishments, and experiences of Christopher Kit Carson during America's expansion to the West, and to preserve the Carson family home and artifacts for visitors and future generations. Learning about our history can make us uncomfortable. American history is fraught with controversy. Kit Carson is an important figure in Taos history and the opening of the West. Historic figures are often used to represent larger forces or ideas. Carson became bigger than life in his own time, a vehicle for manifest destiny, and more recently, a villain by those who see the injustices of the time. We in Taos all want our rights to be respected, but Kit Carson was a citizen of Taos as well, and rests in this town. Kit Carson Holman Museum encourages the council and people of Taos to learn more about this history and to help preserve it, to discuss the man himself, the time in which he lived, and how we see him and that period of history today. We hope this evening can be a departure point for further discussion and afford an opportunity to listen. And in listening, we create space for all to coexist. The museum would like to make available a copy of the PBS video entitled "Kit Carson", it's part of the "American Experience" series, for free public viewing with the assistance of the town of Taos, perhaps at the TCA or other suitable venue. That's basically the end of my talk, but, you know, you've read some comments in the paper from Hampton Sides, Paul Hutton. You cannot get a handle on this man with a couple sentences. And it's difficult with this as well, but it's about an hour and 20 minutes. It's excellent. It has numerous more experts that can not only give factual information, but opinions, expert analysis. And I caution you that whichever side of this discussion you're on, you'll find evidence to support it in here. That's the kind of man he was. So I encourage you to really be patient and view and listen to the whole thing. And, you know, history is, it's a different animal. We have a saying at the museum. It's learn about it, and that's about it, not necessarily from it. Sometimes that's not possible. Preserve it. And the last one is leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. I have a question.
Please.
Mr. Mayor. And Martin, would it be possible, since UNMTV is here, for that to be, for this video to be broadcast on 22 and on the web?
I don't know. I have to call the radio station again for PBS. When I have spoken with them in the past, as long as it's being used for educational purposes at no charge, it's fine. But if we're going to put it on that, I'd like to get their permission first, but maybe we could work together and make that happen?
I think that would help engender conversation.
Well, and the other thing we'd like to do is, if that is something people are interested in doing, we'd also like to offer free admission to anyone from Taos that would like to visit the museum, if that would help as well. Just bring your driver's license.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Can I use this?
You may.
Thank you. My name is Fabi Romero, and first I'd like to thank the councilors for the move of changing the name from Kit Carson to Red Willow Park. I don't have anything personal against Kit Carson. I think my real concern is the fact that history is written by the victors, and that's usually white men. It disturbs me when I hear people talking about Carson being the person who opened the way to the West. I hate to tell you, but the Native Americans had opened that way, and then the Spaniards opened it after the Native Americans. So Kit Carson was somewhat of a Johnny-come-lately to opening the way to the West. So when we talk about, I've always also had a real problem with naming anything for a person, because we are all really complex, contradictory people. And we all have warts, and when you idolize somebody to the point that you name something after them, you're sort of stating that this person is really a worthwhile person, and the others aren't. Until recently, I would say the last 50 years, Spanish people didn't name things after themselves. They named things after something that happened there, or to describe the place, or for a saint, but never after themselves. That's a bad habit that we've picked up very recently. And I don't think it's an admirable habit. Because quite frankly, you look at some of these buildings, like the Celestino Romero Administration Building, and the Pablitto Trujillo Mental Health Building, or whatever, 50 years from now, nobody will know who those people were or what they did. So if we're going to start making... So if we're going to start making heroes, I would like to propose the Mexicans and the Indians who rebelled against the invading American army and were hung in the plaza as traitors. Those to me were the heroes. They were trying to defend their land against the American invaders and in turn, the American government hung them in the park. I would like to see statues to those men in the park. My great grandfather Navajo was one of those men. Fortunately, he wasn't hung or I wouldn't be here. But he was one of the rebels and I'm very proud of him. Thank you.
Thank you, Fabi.
Anybody else? Please.
I'd first like to present you with some willow branches, may I approach?
Please.
This is just a simple thank you for taking the action that you did. It's not easy and it means a lot to a lot of people in Taos. Both good and bad ways of that.
Thank you.
My name is Rivera Sun and could everyone just hold your willow branches up? Just hold them proudly up. Because I feel what just happened in the room right now is a sign of what's happened in Taos in many ways, that we have honored the faces of people, we've honored the names of people, but we haven't honored so much one of the very important parts of our community. When I first moved to Taos, it was Kit Carson this, Kit Carson that. There's a forest, there's a road, there's a this, there's a that, there's a museum. And there is a Taos pueblo and we know it's the Red Willow people, but is there a Red Willow something? When I went to go in search of the Red Willow, you know, my friend Lila June Johnson and I, we actually had to look at Wikipedia to find out what a Red Willow was. And for me, that's no surprise, you know, I'm new to Taos. But for Lila and her mom and I to be like, well, you know, that red bush in the plant in the road there, that's a dogwood. Everyone thinks that's the Red Willow. Is that the Red Willow? I feel like by naming our park Red Willow Park, we're saying we have a history and something we need to honor and educate our children in and I just want to thank you for doing that. I have a brief statement from Kristalene Concha who could not be here tonight, but asked me to read, or Lila asked me to read this in her stead. And it just says, "As we go forward this year in our Taos community, the new administration aims to work together as a whole community, not just as separate groups within it. This does require taking steps towards healing and also listening to one another. The council listened to concerned citizens on June 10th and chose to take action. I applaud all of them for this commitment to healing and working together and while I don't know that it doesn't please, and while I know that it doesn't please everyone, it is a step in the right direction. I teach my own children that if something they do hurts another or if a person is upset, even if it's not their fault, saying sorry or apologizing is a gesture that acknowledges that someone was hurt and that you care. It's like saying, I'm sorry that this has caused you pain. I believe that changing the name of the park is just that. A gesture that acknowledges to many Native people, the name is synonymous with painful experiences, a reminder of past oppression and death. And as fellow humans, we see that it causes pain and therefore make a gesture to heal it. In that same vein, I apologize that if the name change has caused pain to any Kit Carson descendants, that of course is not the goal of the change. Rather, the goal is to move forward in a healthy way. We can't assume to understand the complexity of the man Kit Carson or what he went through in his life, but to have a name for the park, which has become such a central community space that honors Taos and its residents as a whole, is a very kind and compassionate gesture and I am wholeheartedly in support of the name change." That was Kristalene Concha's words and I just want to conclude by saying thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rivera.
And I believe it was yesterday, we got a number of calls from the pueblo and they would have loved to, a lot of the council members would have loved to have been here tonight, but they do have a celebration going on within the pueblo and they apologize for not being here. So just, they asked me to make that statement, so thank you. Anybody else? Please.
My name is Dave Cosiel. Also ex-military as well. And I just want to let you know as far as my feelings are, okay, Kit Carson, he practiced scorched earth politics and Red Willow is growth and renewal and beauty and that is what our town is all about. It's about renewal, it's about growth. Ecology is important. We need to recognize the people, the original people that were here. Kit Carson practiced scalping, scorched earth. He killed Apaches. He killed lots of Navajo. And when people say he's a hero, a hero in whose eyes, not mine, that's for sure. And changing the name to the Willow and the name, it's honoring the people and it's honoring the town as well. Kit Carson has a lot of, like she said, has a lot of places named after him. How many places are named after Native Americans? Not too many. And that's a shame because we're the original people and there's a lot of military installations, you know, military, it's like peace and love and growth and renewal and that's what it's about. It's about the people and the original people that were here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I feel like I'm carrying a peace brush.
Thank you.
And thank you. My name is Dariel Garner. My family has been here for many, many centuries. We first came to the United States in 1635. That's on my father's side. On my mother's side, I think science now tells us 16, 17,000 years that we've been here. We have shed blood all over this country. We have shed each other's blood, both of my European ancestors, my indigenous ancestors. We have shed in wars where we have fought against each other. We fought each other in the Civil War. We fought each other in the American Revolution. We fought each other in various of the indigenous wars of, against the indigenous people, against the European people. We haven't gained anything from that. What we gained from is peace. Changing the name of the park from someone who has been involved in those wars to a symbol of peace is the highest honor you can do for yourselves and for the future of this community. I want to salute the council for making that decision. I'd like to salute the symbol that they want, that they made, one of weaving, one of the, making the sacred bowls that joined together to make a sign of peace. And I want to thank you all for supporting them in that decision and telling your neighbors about it and telling people about what Taos can do together, how they can move together for peace and reconciliation. It's, we have to honor everyone that has given their life in war, all my relatives and all the blood shed here, all the tens of thousands of ancestors that have come together in this and the people who fought in the foreign wars. We have to honor all those, but we have to remember that they're doing it to maintain peace and have peace and honor. So thank you so much and bless you all for doing what you've done.
Thank you, Karen.
Anyone else? Please.
Hi, my name's Julie. These are my kids, Nishoy and Jayden. They're from Taos pueblo and I'm from Hamas pueblo. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. I've read so many books on Kit Carson and it is really in the way people interpret it. You know, the first gentleman that spoke pointed out a lot of facts and I've read those same facts and when I read them, I was just brought to tears, you know? Yes, he was loyal to the military, but he, he almost seemed like very two-faced because he did live amongst the Native Americans. They taught him a lot. He was friends with them as well, but his loyalty stood with the military and yes, he had to go, he was ordered to do these things. You know, at this point, when he was ready to do these things, he didn't want to, you know, he wanted to go home and stay home with his family. You know, he didn't expect it to be such a long, long journey, long trip and you know, when the Navajos held their ground and they stayed in their, in their hogans and they stayed there and, you know, they weren't fighting, they weren't coming out with their bows and arrows and, you know, starting a war. They were forced out, you know, and they died. Carson may not have killed each one of them, but he was at command and you know, over 9,000 Native Americans were killed and you know, a lot of, a lot of history has been lost because, you know, another speaker said, you know, mostly who writes it is white people who write it, you know, and it really is in the eye of the beholder. And when I'm reading these books, I'm reading in between the lines. I'm reading different books and gathering my own thoughts, you know, and it's like, it's so sad and I'm thrilled at the name change because not only does it affect the community of Taos, it, any Native American across the nation here knows who Kit Carson is and if you lived on a reservation, you know who he is because the reservations were created, he was one of the creators of the reservations, you know? He says, you know, come, let me take this land from you, but we'll give you this small little piece. You know, that's what I've gathered, that's what I've learned. I went to Native American schools, boarding schools. I went to public schools. I've learned the Spanish history and the Native American history and it is in the eye of who's teaching it, you know? And I listened to my elders speak and tell stories amongst the lands that's not just Taos, but the land that's been spread out and taken over the years and they're barely starting to get it back, barely starting to heal and people are barely starting to acknowledge change with the Native Americans. And this small gesture of a name change, it is, it is a small gesture, but it's part of a bigger movement that is coming, you know? I would say every race has been affected at one point and every race has gone through the times of bettering themselves and coming up. And now this time, it's the Native Americans' time and this small gesture of changing the name is a small step, but it's huge. It's huge. I mean, it even, it didn't just hit the Taos news, it hit the Navajo times, you know? It hit places in New York, you know? So it's not just here in this small community. It affects a large, a larger amount of people. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please, either place you'd like.
I'll sit down.
Okay. Just pull the mic close to you so that you can...
I just want to commend you for changing the name of the park. To me, it's more of a human right. If Navajo people, Native American people and anyone who respects diversity goes to the park, I mean, to see the name Kit Carson and to know the history, you know, he did the 300 mile walk with 9,000, 8 or 9,000 Navajos in the winter, 300 miles in the winter with very little food and clothing and water and Native Americans deserve to be able to walk into the park and not be insulted by that. I just really appreciate that you're paying attention to these issues and I'm sure you didn't think this would be so controversial, but thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Julie.
Anyone else? Please. Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council and the town manager for holding this open discussion and inviting all people from all sides to share their views on this very important and timely issue. My name is Robbie Romero and I just wanted to share a couple of things. One is that I suggested the name Red Willow for the park to the mayor and to the town manager and council for a couple of reasons. And I just wanted to clarify that, you know? First, I suggested it because the opportunity presented itself to me and I wanted to suggest a name that would honor the people of the Red Willow and because the Red Willow is sacred to indigenous peoples throughout Turtle Island. It's a medicine. It's used in ceremonies. It's used in so many ways and it is a symbol of a coming together. It's a symbol of the sacred hoop. It's a symbol of ceremony in so many ways, so many different native nations. But I also suggested it because I wanted to kindle a conversation about one-sided perspectives that are more often than not, his story, not history. And this is important to have this conversation and it's healthy to have this conversation. It's a healing process to have a conversation like this. I remember in September of 2000, the Assistant Secretary to Bureau of Indian Affairs at their 175th anniversary in Washington DC, stood up and he apologized to Native peoples for the atrocities and the ethnic cleansing and the genocide and the theft of the children that were put into boarding schools and taken from their parents. He apologized to those children taken and to the parents left behind. And he apologized on behalf of the Bureau of Indian Affairs and on behalf of the United States of America for these crimes against humanity. And yes, we have a difficult past, even in the community of Taos, but that doesn't mean we can't move into the future and move into a time of healing with respect for each other's cultures, with respect for each other's ways, for each other's religions, each other's ceremonies. This is what's needed. This is the conversation that I'm so happy that this issue has brought up because this is good for all of us, no matter what side you're on, no matter where you come from. This is a healthy conversation. It's a good thing. And I'm not here to put down anybody. I just wanted to come up and share with you why I suggested the name and share with you that I really believe that the era of misconceptions, the era of stereotypes, the era of name-calling in American history books, sports and pop culture is over. And I hope we have matured enough to have a healthy, truthful, respectful and non-violent conversation about how we can come together, look at our past, look at who we are today, our present and look at our interdependent future because we are all like the sacred hoop depending on each other and all our relations are dependent on Mother Earth. And I believe we can do this. I believe we have the virtue, the strength, the spirituality amongst all of us, all people, all colors, to come together on this issue and bring about a healing to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Thank you, Mayor, everybody. My name is David Fernandez. I'm a native-born Taos person over here, like a few others in the crowd here and I'm also here as a descendant of a... of a, of a Navajo grandmother. In my story, my great-grandmother and her brother were out in the fields, somewhere out that way. And they were kidnapped, just as kids, they were kidnapped and taken out, you know. And they somehow made the circuit, maybe to the Taos Trade Fair or something like that. And she became part of the family here. She and her brother were kidnapped by, by Comanches at the time. As you probably know, in those times, there was a lot of that kind of thing going on. Everybody was, was ripping each other's kids off and selling. There was a lot of trading. There were a lot of very, very dark, dark things that were going on back then, just as there are now. But that was going on back then. And her name was Sacoaro. And, but I'm here. I have been very much a part of Taos in many, many ways in my short life. I've been a writer, continue to be a writer, a newspaper columnist. And I'm very, very familiar with all the different eras of Taos, what was going on back then. At present, I also serve as a director, a member of the Board of Directors of the Northern Rio Grande National Heritage Area. One other thing that we did in the past, in the 1970s, we had actually attempted to change the name of Kit Carson Park to the name of Santiago Lohan, who was a, perished in baton, baton death march. During that endeavor, a lot of discussion did take place. At the time, the park was owned by the state of New Mexico, and there was a lot of back-and-forth going on. The name was not changed to Mr. Lohan, but in keeping with our cherishing the memories of those who fought and on behalf of, of, of this country, his name stands right up there, like so many others. What I want to suggest tonight takes off a little bit from what Mr., Mr. Jagger from the museum and a couple of other people have mentioned, Robbie. Mayor, council, a lot of people seem to have the impression that perhaps you guys and gal moved very, very, very precipitously on this. That may or may not be the case. I think a good case has been made for Red Willow as a name. I do want to thank all the Red Willows in attendance, though, for having given their, their lives to be present at this meeting. Thank you, Red Willows. But nevertheless, whether it's this council changing the name of, of a park here, or another council changing something else as we go on down the line, we're talking about something so much greater than us all the time. And I would like to suggest, and I'll put it in the form of a proposal a little later on, is that the council might consider something regular in terms of the discussion. For example, the town might consider identifying one or two or a couple of people, three people, to serve as resource historians, you know, for the council, for things that come up, to really look into the context of times past. We would not be here where we are tonight if it were not for what had happened before. You know, the past determines what we are, whether it was an hour ago or two or three centuries ago. That's just a given. In the past of Kit Carson and those times, you know, it was a different kind of society here in Taos. You had Padre Martinez and, and that crew, all at that time. And I think there are some old copies of El Crepúsculo, the old, old newspaper, from way back then, that talks about things that were going on in, in that era. You know, reports of the campaigns out there or the, the events here, or whether it was obviously the, the horrible scene here in January of 1847, when some of our brothers and sisters and, and people were actually hung on the plaza. Maybe Fabi's right, you know, maybe we can name, make, name it the Taos Hanging Tree, for example. There's a lot in a name. But more importantly than the name is what's going on as a current behind the scenes. So, I'd like to suggest that the council might consider really looking, taking a good look at the real historical past of Taos area. It could be a person, a couple of people, whichever way you guys might want to look at it, as a resource. The other suggestion I had would be, say, at each council meeting, while tonight we're June 24th, by the way, it's, it's the Feast of San Juan, Bautista, San, Dia de San Juan. And so, a lot of the pueblos and people are involved in those activities. That's what's going on there. But say, for example, June 24th tonight, at some point in the meeting, somebody having researched it could say back to the 1800s, could say, well, as if we were there, you know, "Well, June 24th, 1868, yes, such and such is going on way out there on, on the lands far away," or campaign going over there. In other words, kind of draw some kind of a connection between things of the past to what's going on right now. And being a way of kind of showing the connection that there is between history and who we are now. And the third, probably most important, is that the council could consider appointing a historical commissioner or a group, volunteers, or to work closely in ongoing, you know, talks, presentations, films, on different topics that are important and of interest to our community here. Taos and the area here obviously go way back, many, many thousands and thousands of years has been alluded, as well as to who we are right now. But each and every single one of us here right now tonight is a product of things that had happened so long before. There is not a single race, or tribe, or part of humanity that in their history has not committed murder upon somebody else. We do not want to dwell on that. And that's why it's good to have a, a healing symbol, if in fact, that's what it can turn out to be. We wish the whole world could take up a symbol like this, whether it's in Iraq, or Palestine, or wherever else violence is going on in the world, race against race, killing against, against others, our brothers and sisters. For Taos, it can be a, a nice step, a good step.
Mr. Fernandez in closing?
And so, if you can remember all of that, you're, you're a good man. And I thank you. Sincerely thank you, Mayor, and council members for this. And I am, I am at your disposal through my own writing, whatever else I do, to help you all with all of this.
Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Anyone else?
My name is David Cortez, and I'll be brief, but I, I do think that the Washington Redskins changing their name, just, or the US Patent Office saying that the Redskin name is offensive to the team of Washington DC Redskins was prescient, and I think it fully supports what you do. So, I think what you're doing is extremely crucial, really, and more places should do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez.
Anyone else? Judge? Your Honor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Good evening. My name is Judge Chavez. And as a judge, I can't take sides. I gotta remain neutral. But I think that, but I think that if you really want to pay tribute to the people of the Taos Pueblo, by the way, I'm, on, on June 1st, I was 74 years old. And for 74 years, I have known that park as Kit Carson Park. And I don't care what action the council takes here today. I mean, I guess to me, it's, it's, once something is instilled in your head, it's hard to get it out of there, okay? Anyway, I think that if you really want to pay tribute to the people of the Taos Pueblo, we have one true hero over there. And to me, it's one of the men that I respect most of all. And I would encourage the council to forget Red Willow and name it Tony Reyna Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here and talked with you the other day, and you, council members, and people of Taos Pueblo. I'm, my name is Michelle Kunchad. I'm a tribal member from the place of the Red Willows. I come here today with an open mind and an open heart. And I see that there's a lot of, I guess you could tag the word controversy in, in the naming of a place that we all come together. We have birthday parties there. We have Taos Pueblo Head Start congregates there. I had called Mayor, when was it, Thursday?
Yes, ma'am.
No, it's today, Wednesday. Okay. I called you on Tuesday. And I asked for a rescheduling of this very important meeting and forum, because our people today were celebrating the Feast of San Juan. And we, we do corn dances, and a lot of our council members, as well as a lot of active, very important tribal members were dancing today. We dance for everyone. And I'm here today to ask if there could be an extension of this forum in order to involve the Indigenous cultures of this community. I'd really, really like that. My father, Mike Kunchad, who was a three-time governor of Taos Pueblo, was wanting to come here. But he was involved in, as other councilmen and the governor and war chief, they were a part of the dancing and the singing. So, I'm, I just came in because I gotta go back and finish up the date. And I just wanted to extend that. He has one thing that he would like me to say, and I'm saying this on behalf of my father, not as part of a tribe or anything, but that back in the 1940s, I think he mentioned this to you, that when the baton death march warriors came back, there was talk, and I see some heads nodding, there was talk of naming the park Veterans Park. It included everyone, the Native, the Hispanic, the whites, everyone. And so, he's, he's gonna talk with governor, and they're gonna go backtrack on all that. And then that way, he'd like to come here and present that to you at a, at a further, I mean, you know, a later date. So, I really am thankful for giving me the time to come up here, as I do have to go back and it's somewhere chilly, just kidding. But that's what we do today. We celebrate the Feast of San Juan, and that's a Christian saint. But we yet, we dance in our Native culture, and that's how we, that's how we celebrate as a people. And they have, all of this is on their minds. This was the talk of the pueblo today. And they'd really like to come, you know, have a, a further conversation on this matter. So, and I thank you for considering even a name change. Because yes, this park has been named Kit Carson Park for 74 years, but now with the integration of our tribes, we have Navajos in our, in our tribal, our population, as well as Apaches and all, you know, on down the line. So, they refer to it like, "Oh, you want to go to that park?" And we're like, "Well, it's a park. It's a name." So, we, we do a lot of healing in our ceremonies. So, as the gentleman mentioned before about the name change of the Washington Redskins, you know, maybe we are moving forward as a culture and as society in our minds too, and in our hearts. Okay? That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I don't know, before you, you came in, I did mention that I had talked to your father, and, and he did let me know that they would like to be here. And we will extend, I believe, this meeting into our next meeting in two weeks. Yes, give him the opportunity to come and...
Yeah, and he said, "Make sure it's not the Feast of Satiana."
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
So, anyone else? See none?
I'm coming.
Oh, there you go.
I'm following.
Okay, not a problem.
Greetings and blessings to everybody for being here today. My name is Kristin Gemma Rossar De Ferredando. I go Gemma for short. I wanted to thank the mayor and the council as well for giving this opportunity of, of changing the name of the park. Red Willow is, is a medicine. And people of this land who were here before any of us were here, the Red Willow people, this is, this is medicine. And my partner, he's from Taos Pueblo, and I'm very blessed because I've been adopted and, and I've been learning some of the ways. But there's so much suffering out there that it's sad and it's so unnecessary because there is so much medicine that is available that these people have suffered. And I think that anything in this town that can remind us of not war or killing, or, you know, past history of just bringing up stuff that's contradictory, or, excuse me, controversial, and again, with war and hate, anger, I think just those little simple steps of changing names will really end a lot of suffering. And not just in, not just in Taos Pueblo community, but all over. I mean, the whole town of Taos community, the Spanish, the whites, the other Native American Indians that have come in here, you know, and, and not being, I personally, I, I, I'm, I'm just here, I just want to see peaceful relations to come and happen. And again, like, if we cannot be reminded all the time by names, by subliminal things that remind us of war and killing, I, it will be, it can make a big change. And I'm just really grateful that I live in a town and that this is considered and that we're able to be an example for, you know, other towns and the whole earth at the same time. And it's an honor, and I really honor the name Red Willow. Again, it's an amazing sacrament. It's an amazing medicine. And it's here for peace and unity and love and, and freedom. And it grows everywhere. So, I think that's pretty cool. And this plant was actually here before even humans were here. So, that's pretty cool. But peace and love and blessings to everybody. And again, thank you, council, and thank you, mayor. It's an honor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.
Anyone else? Please.
Hi. My name's David Van Eppes. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna talk about the, the right or the wrong of the naming of the park. You're gonna do whatever you want to do. All right? You know, historical accuracy is irrelevant. If it makes you feel good, you're gonna do it. All right? What I have a concern about is the way... What I have a concern about is the way it was done in the first place. The fact that it was done without public comment, that there would be no public comment if there wasn't such a huge public outcry, alright? That was wrong. You may not think it was, it was wrong, pure and simple. And if you had any integrity, you'd step down, you'd walk out the door now and you wouldn't come back, alright? That's just the way it is. I'm more than welcome for you to, you know, for you to address me on this and why it was done that way. The people of the town of Taos have a right to know when changes are gonna be made. They have a right to know what those changes will be, and they have a right to have input on those changes. And it was only because of the public outcry over this particular issue that this is being heard today, alright? So call the park whatever you want. Historians know who Kit Carson was. Historians know what the mood of the times was, were. They knew, they know what the Navajo were like at that time. They know what Taos Pueblo was like. They know the interaction between all the parties involved, alright? So what you call it, doesn't matter. I think the recommendation to call it Veterans Park, I thought was excellent. You know, if you're gonna change the name, change it to something that's all-inclusive. Red Willow, we've already got a town named Red Willow, alright? All I ask is that you include the people in the future, alright? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
My name is Naina Matishak. I wasn't gonna speak, but I wanted my voice to be heard as well as a person in great gratitude for this wonderful council and new mayor that we have, that are really making changes to unify this amazing town that we all live in. The day I heard, I practically wept. I've lived here about eight years. I have four children. And my daughters were so happy, too. They jumped up and down and clapped their hands. And please don't leave the building and leave. Keep doing what you're doing. And blessings to all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Naina.
Anyone else?
Just the council, just shortly?
Shortly, please.
This has been brought up several times. I'm Rivera Sun, again, for the record. For me, I want to bring forth the notion that our problems, as many civilizations, are rooted in our fundamental love of violence. And if we could get over this notion, I personally, as someone who's only 31 years old, would really appreciate it. I have a lot of respect for veterans. My grandfathers are both veterans. My uncle is very much involved in the military. My cousins are in the military. And I personally think that we have a culture that overly worships violence in the military without actually acknowledging the suffering that is caused both to our veterans, we don't take care of them the way that we should, and to the people that we inflict violence upon. And this goes back historically through how we treat history, and it goes forward into how we train our children to approach war and violence. And for me, changing the name to Red Willow is part of acknowledging that this worship of Kit Carson, the legend, not the historical of Kit Carson, but Kit Carson, the legend, is part of our worship of violence in this culture. Kit Carson, Indian killer, the dime novel hero, is part of the worship of violence. And I don't think we're gonna get anywhere through dishonoring our veterans, dishonoring the sacrifices that were made on all sides of a battle, but I also don't think we're going to get forward in ceasing to need or have battles by worshiping violence and as any culture on this planet. Thank you for indulging me in having that chance to say that.
Thank you. Anyone else? So before we go on, I'd just like to say, you know, the idea was not for us to fight about or try to rewrite the past, but instead to reach out to start the discussion about working together to build one community and one future for all Taosennials, all of us. That was the goal.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor?
I'd like to address the general public with regards to my vote on this. In the past two weeks, I've received many emails, both for and against. And I feel that this council, while having the right intentions in mind, maybe did act a little bit too expediently on this without involving the public. So I'd like to read a statement, Mr. Mayor, if you could, just indulge me...
Please.
...a few minutes. "So I feel that I have failed to properly take into account the majority of my constituents' wishes and desires. That I was elected to uphold an office that many put their trust into me to always impartially act on their behalf. My concern lies in that our actions were done in a somewhat arbitrary fashion. Not to say that Red Willow isn't an appropriate name, but what I feel I have done is left out the majority of our general public in a democratic process. Our laws do not allow us to exercise a personal feeling but what is written in black and white. Lady Justice wears a blindfold because this process should be impartial and fair. I do have to say that I was wrong, not in the desire to rename the park, but that I failed to listen and open up the floor to all our constituents. I must apologize not only to those I offended in my actions, but those that will feel offended in my desire to redact my vote. I'm not attempting to choose a side, but I truly have the desire to make a fair and impartial decision that is in the best interest of this community as a whole, without creating a divide between racial and ethnic lines. I want all parties, including that of our Native American brothers and sisters of this community, to be heard. I feel we have failed in what makes our country and community great, and that is the ability for our entire community to be heard out in that democratic process. I have no authority above myself, but of which is vested in me to speak on behalf of my constituency and that have made their voices loud and clear, and that is to be heard. Honestly, Phil, I made my vote in an uninformed, extremely improper, and informal vote. And for that, I apologize. I took staff recommendations on the issues and, in all honesty, I had at that time not undertaken the proper advising of my own accord and my entire community. It is for that reason that I ask that we hold a proper public meeting with proper notice to be given with date, certain time, so that this issue can be heard, discussed, and debated by the majority of our community as a whole. Both those for and against. This renaming involves much more history and convicted compassion than one could describe. Those that are on both sides of the issue equally have their convictions. I feel using the term "writing of wrongs" is an unfair term to all parties, as a simple name change does no significant justice. If we are to move forward as a community, in cooperation and understanding amongst each other, we need to acknowledge true compassion, convictions, and understanding from within as humanity. As many have mentioned, we cannot rewrite history or should not censor the teachings of it. It remains of equal importance to be sensitive to all its effects." In that, I will end with a quote. "Whoever wishes to foresee the future must consult the past, for human events ever resemble those of preceding times. This arises from the fact that they are produced by men who ever have been and ever shall be animated by the same passions, and thus, they necessarily have the same results." Again, I thank everyone that's been in attendance. Mr. Mayor, I ask that we bring this back to the general public, even though it's not an action item, but I do feel that we've done some pretty decent injustices in not hearing both sides and that our Native American brothers and sisters had not even been informed of our vote. So, Mr. Mayor, I ask that we bring it back.
And it will be on the next agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So what is our date of our next meeting, Mr. Bellis, so that the people that are here and their constituents that are here have that date?
The date is July 8th.
July 8th?
I'm sorry, at 1:00.
And that will start at 1 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay? Thank you. Appreciate it. So we'll go ahead and on down the agenda, matters from staff, cops grant, community mediation program, Chief Weaver?
We still love you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, good evening. What I wanted to inform you of and let you know where we were going, and this actually goes back to some of the direction that I received from the council last year, is we have, the Taos Police Department have put in a grant to the cops, and that grant was for a total of, let me get to the baseline here, for 61,000, I'm sorry, 67,000, approximately $67,000. The reason for this grant, there's actually four different aspects of the grant. The first part is to create a community mediation program, and that would allow law enforcement officers and other people to make recommendations of people or problems so that they can go into mediation program. Hopefully, we can catch a problem before it gets to the point that it's a criminal matter. And what that allows our officers is, it allows them an opportunity to kind of get closer to the needs of the community, figure out where issues are at, and try to figure out a solution to those problems at an early point. The second thing that this does is it allows us to create additional mediators, and these mediators will be used in this program, as well as also being available to the magistrate and district court for their mediation program. The next thing that this does, this allows us to have training for all the members of the Taos Police Department, and we, I would like to have them trained in what's called crisis intervention. Crisis intervention training is a 40-hour block. With this grant, I have put intuition per diem, so we'd be able to have all the members of the department trained in that as well. So the crisis intervention training is focused on how to deal with people who are in mental health crisis, but it also teaches them a lot of, gives them a lot of skills and abilities to de-escalate problems. So it actually, it's kind of a force multiplier, deals with day-to-day activities as well as with people in need of intervention. And then finally, in this grant, the hope is that this will be the seed money that will create the grant, and at the end of this two-year cycle, that it will transition to a private entity. And so, this, the grant's already been submitted, and we're waiting to see what happens with it. If you look at the breakdown, we have put in a salary for a civilian person. That is the person that'd be the project manager. This would have to go out to the public, so we can select the best person. Also, equipment came out to 2,400, supplies about $900, and that's so that we could actually fit an office for it. Now, when this program transfers into a civilian section, that equipment will stay with us, and the hope is that I will be able to move that from the mediation program, actually use that equipment to help set up our intel branch that the Bureau of Justice just got finished with their initial assessment last week. So is there any questions or suggestions or any issues I can deal with from the council?
Chief, just one question. In part of this grant, is there funding to educate the officers to try not use deadly force when they have to use force?
Yeah, when it comes...
In other words, moving away from the problem that is escalating in Albuquerque?
Right. In actuality, the crisis intervention training, really, the big section of that is officer survival, to know when the situation's getting to the point that use of force is required and is necessary. Now, the neat thing about crisis intervention training is that it puts a big emphasis on how to actually figure out what the key problems are and how to de-escalate those situations. So it doesn't necessarily deal with use of force issues, that's covered by a different form of training, but what it does is to allow the officer to know what triggers are, know how to stay away from escalating a situation with a person in mental crisis. So the roundabout answer is, if this is utilized correctly, the hope is that it will absolutely lower the chance of having to use force against a person.
I'm not saying not to use force, I'm just trying to get it away from what is classified as deadly force.
Right.
In other words, you can stop somebody without necessarily...
Without shooting them.
Well, I mean, you can still shoot them, but you don't necessarily have to shoot them in the chest.
Well, the use of deadly force, and to be very, very, to be very transparent about this, the officers of the town of Taos have shown consistently, they are very good with understanding the use of force, understand the reactive control model. And also, as an administrator, as a supervisor, I've been very sure to make sure that the officers understand that I expect them to protect themselves. And there are times when use of force, and there's times when deadly force is absolutely necessary. So I think the best way to deal with that is to deal with having an in-force use of force trainer, which we're working on right now, an in-house defensive tactic constructor, which we have now. And so, to start dealing in that angle, to make sure that the officers are very cognizant of civil rights, that they are very understanding of de-escalation techniques, and at the same time, they also have an understanding of their duty and responsibility to use deadly force. One of the criticisms that came from the Department of Justice reporting on Albuquerque Police Department was that there wasn't enough training dealing with the civil rights and wasn't enough training dealing with Fourth Amendment issues. And I have to mirror that we are in a position that we need to deal with that as well. I'll remind the council and the mayor that this year, the budget that I put in was very heavy into tuition and very heavy into per diem. And that really is my desire to get the officers, to get the department back to the basics. And part of the basics really is that they understand and have a real good handle on all those topics. Thank you. Yes, sir, thank you.
And Chief, thank you for doing this. I think this is one of those projects, or I don't wanna call it a project, but an opportunity, I guess, for to get our officers trained and find avenues within the department to mitigate some of the problems. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Thanks for the report, Chief. Yes, this is all about community police work. And we've had an outcry, as you know, the last three or four months, for exactly this kind of program. I just have a couple of questions. The position has not been advertised?
Yes, not, sir.
And that's a one-and-a-half-year position?
It's actually, well, it's gonna turn out to be a two-year, a part-time, two-year position.
Right. And how do you envision, I mean, who are you looking for? Who are you advertising for? We have one of the great mediators sitting in the audience tonight, and I just am wondering how the department's gonna go about that.
Well, inside the grant, we've already enumerated the responsibilities of that person. There's actually, there actually is a lot of responsibilities for a relatively, not a whole lot of money. What we're looking for is a person who has prior experience with setting up mediation programs, experience with training and mentoring other mediators, capability of scheduling the events, and also being able to kind of have a good buy-in into the community, and also have a good understanding of the interaction of the Taos Police Department and the town of Taos with this. So on top of having kind of your generic officer, office management capabilities, we also need a person that has a very, very good understanding about the systems inside the town of Taos.
So you're gonna be going outside the department?
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure that this individual will be trained in CIT or crisis intervention therapy or techniques?
Well, this person for the mediation training, that's gonna be a different aspect of it. The crisis intervention training is pretty specific for law enforcement. And so the hope is that the officers get that training so, one, they can deal with people in mental health crisis, but the second thing is, we can kind of get them into the point that they understand a community-based solution system, and they also understand that they actually have a second ability, which would be community mediation, for those people to assist them with problems.
And kudos to the department, because when they've had to enact community policing techniques, even without all of this training, they've done an excellent job. I have a couple other questions, Chief, if that's okay, and if I can indulge the council. This is 100% federally funded.
That is correct, sir.
And I noticed there's $32,000 in travel?
That's travel and per diem. That's tuition and per diem, I believe.
And those are for officers to travel somewhere for CIT training?
Yes, sir, that'd be going to Albuquerque. Inside the training, there is a block that is for the mediation trainers, so we have twelve thousand dollars set aside to train ten mediators, and then the, the belief is that we can do that locally.
You said twelve for ten?
Yes, twelve thousand dollars for ten people. That was at a registration cost of twelve hundred dollars, which was the highest current fee I found charging for that. So if we can bring people in for eight hundred, all the better. And then for the crisis intervention training, currently, I've found that being taught in Albuquerque primarily, and so that requires a registration in the per diem for twenty-four officers, which came out to nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Truly, my hope is that I'll be able to bring trainers up here, and if we can do that, then get rid of the per diem cost, and then hopefully I can, I can move that money into a different line item. I'd have to have the, the Office of the Cops permission to do that.
Right.
And now, the, another component of the cops grants are that if at the two years, at the end of the two years, if this has not been successfully transferred into a private entity, there is a capability of getting, getting another grant, and they actually have follow-up grants to these. So while I, I am, my, my goal is to train as many people and really make this self-sufficient there, and if we, you know, if we, if we get this grant, my hope is that we'll get all those goals met, and in two years, it'll be transferred into civil, into a private organization. But if it isn't, we can possibly still get additional money to continue the movement of the program. Now, and, and you, you, you should hear this coming from me more and more, is that I'm trying to make every new program self-sustaining, and so it can live on their own, and so whomever the next chief of police is down the line, that person doesn't have to invest time, energy into, into working it, that the system's already working itself. And that's really what we're hoping, that this, this will be in place and will be self-running.
So, and that was leading right into my next question, chief. Sustainability, how are we going to keep this thing going?
And that, you know, that's an excellent question that we've, we've been pondering often. You know, the, the quickest solution is that at some point in time, there may be a need to actually charge participants inside of this for the mediation program itself. And for all the new mediators, they're, they have a requirement to do a certain amount of mediations free of charge, and so the hope really is that this will be part of the training program for the magistrate and for the district court for the mediation programs, that we'll be able to have it run primarily volunteer-wise, and if that doesn't work, that is going to be a task that we're going to have to develop in the next two years of what's the funding stream going to be.
So in thinking about sustainability, chief, I, I want to say you've told me that you've been in touch with Kim Hamster over at Tri-County, who's involved with Crisis Systems of Care and a little group we've begun in town in collaboration with Holy Cross-
Right.
Okay. The hope there was that in the event of a traumatic experience, the PD on the scene could simply call for that therapeutic intervention to relieve the cop on the duty so that, and we can become more cost-effective.
Exactly.
So sustainability, you're in touch with Kim, it might be useful to, if you can squeeze the staff out, to get someone to begin attending those meetings. I know they're getting ready to do some serious grant work.
Yeah, exactly.
Here in town, there's some serious mental health needs in our community, and right now, we're catching them as catch can't. I mean, in some cases, counselors are counseling.
Yeah, exactly.
And in other cases, in other cases, there, folks, citizens are being referred out pretty quickly.
Right.
But anyway, Kim Hamster and sustainability may be an alternative. Collaboration with the sheriff and the staters, can they get involved in this program? Have you reached out to them?
Absolutely. The, the initial program, I wanted to keep to the town of Tallas, I, and quite honestly, because I, I really think that we will have far more clients than what we need initially. You know, we've just initially, kind of through word of mouth, put out that we were, that we had this program capability, and sure enough, we started getting people kind of immediately. So initially, I wanted to keep it pretty small and just keep aside the town of Tallas for the Tallas Police Department, and the sheriff's department, the state police, obviously, if they have an issue, I, I believe we have an ethical responsibility to assist them. If it's something that, if we could keep something from turning into a criminal event, I think we should do that. That conversation's already started with several different people, and then going back to, to Kim and Tri-County, they actually have a lead on a pretty good grant, and the grant would be dealing with the entire community of our system. The Tallas Police Department is supporting that. We actually sent a letter of support today for those grant people. I actually spoke with Kim earlier today, and so I believe that we have their buy-in as well. So, and once again, I, I, and, and I feel sorry for Mr. Bellis, because I, I tried to line out all the different things that I have going and how they're connected, and if they all connect, this will actually be pretty sustainable.
So we are reaching out, though, to our staters and sheriff?
Yes.
Could you keep me posted, chief? I have a lot of connections that way, and if you need help, Rick? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Move for approval.
Second.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
We're going to be leased with our Lady of Guadalupe Church.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a one-year renewal slash extension of the current lease with the Nuestra Señora de Guadalupe Church, which is for the Loretto parking lot, which is the free parking lot that we have rented historically. The lease essentially mirrors the terms of the current lease, with one exception, we've, we've put in a termination provision that allows termination with thirty days' notice in the case that we're able to make a substantial change or improvement to our parking plan and what, what we are able to provide to our constituents and visitors. But in all other respects, the, the proposed lease mirrors what's currently in place, the basic terms of which are thirty thousand dollars per year. There are a set number of days that the church reserves the use of the parking lot, which primarily are the three days during the fiestas, where the church uses the parking lot to do some fundraising. The church actually asked if they could negotiate additional days this year. We were able to keep that negotiation out of this for the time being, and with that, I'll take any questions that the council has.
Counselor Brock?
Jay, just a quick question on your last comment concerning additional days. Did they give you any indication of what those days would be and why? I'm just curious.
Well, you know, Councilman Pedalta, this sort of was raised in the context of what I'll call a feel-out conversation, where the, the representative of the church actually originally asked for more money, and I suggested that that was unlikely, given the town's budget situation, and so the conversation shifted to other things that the church might be able to get out of the town instead of more money. There was no specific date mentioned. You know, I, I did suggest that it was awfully difficult to justify any additional consideration in this lease, given the state of the economy, the state of the town's finances, and that the town was really in, in need of exploring its options for long-term parking solutions, and that this would probably not be a great time to try to negotiate for more consideration, and that seemed to suffice for the time being. But in answer to your question, I don't have any specific dates.
I'm just trying to think in my own mind, what, what are the dates they could use to raise money, but-
Well, it was clear that it would be during the summer. I think that, that there was probably some recognition last year, that there were a couple of big weekends that they could have perhaps made some good fundraising money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Mr. Bellis, have we, it seems like our parking rental situation is all over the lot. Is there a set standard for rates?
No. It's negotiated.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Hahn, just for clarification, do you mean the rates, these lease rates?
Yes, like square footage?
Well, there is some historical basis. I mean, there have been appraisals in the past that have been adjusted to today's kind of market prices, but not accurately, and one of the recommendations I'll make going forward with all, all the property we either lease from individuals or entities, or lease to individuals and entities, we're really going to need to update appraisals on all those properties soon, which is going to be an undertaking, but, so, you know, in answer to the question, I don't want to say there's no basis whatsoever. There is some correlation among square footages, although what, what I will say is there are, for example, we, we rent the, what is called the Guadalupe Parking Lot, which is owned by US Bank, for a much more favorable price, and that's just out of their goodwill, in my opinion. So there is some variation, but I don't, but I think there's also some basis in the form of appraisals.
Right. I'd like to see us look into that. And then historically, Rick, do you know who paved that parking lot, the Earl Lady of Guadalupe Parking Lot?
The one that we leased?
I believe the town does.
The town did.
So the town paved the lot, and did we receive any kind of consideration for that improvement in their property value?
Originally, yes.
Do you recall?
You know, I can't off, right off the top of my head, but I'm almost, I think for the first five years or so that we leased that lot, we leased it at about a third or so of what we're leasing it for now.
So fifteen thousand a year instead of the current forty-five?
And, Mr. Mayor, just as another point of clarification, it's, the current lease rate is thirty thousand a year. The, there's an amendment in your packet that may have caused some confusion, because it was an amendment that extended a term by a half a year.
Right.
The original amount was thirty thousand. It added fifteen thousand to extend the term by six months.
Okay, so it's thirty thousand. And Councilman Peralta, can you revisit that history again? So we paved the lot and received some kind of, so on a thirty thousand dollar rental, we were paying?
Well, I, I don't think at that time, the rent was-
Thirty.
Was, figured at thirty thousand dollars, it was less than that, but I can't remember the terms exactly.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Hahn, what I'd be happy to do is research that and get back to you with whether there is any actual acknowledged consideration for our paving lot or not.
Mayor, council, the, the lease prior to the current lease, the, the one we're renewing was initiated at thirty thousand in two thousand thirteen. Prior to that, there was a ten-year lease at twenty thousand dollars a year. So in two thousand twelve, the end of two thousand twelve, a ten-year lease expired that was twenty thousand dollars a year.
That would've gone back to two thousand two.
About around then, yes.
But I think there was a prior lease to that.
Could be, I'm not sure when it was built. But you know, the town did build the lot, and then when the lease reverts to the church, they, they take possession of the lot as it is.
Yes.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, Mr. Caldwell, I would like to, for the council to look at that, the pavement issues, and whether we've been appropriately compensated for that work effort. And then I noticed in this resolution, there is the possibility of putting meters up there, and I stress the word possibility, that's not a certainty. So there is the possibility for more capital to be expended into that lot. So I realize we're not going to be putting up meters anytime soon, but we're maintaining that possibility. And Councilwoman Cantu, did I just hear you down there saying something?
She, she was warning.
Okay, sorry. I'm done.
Last week, I was hearing about federal, federal monies that were going to be available to the state of New Mexico in the amount of thirty-seven point seven million dollars, and to the communities that they were going to go to, it was for whatever we needed them for, whether it was infrastructure or whatever. It was for our benefit, and I immediately called Mr. Bellis. By any chance, Mr. Bellis, did you, were you able to look into that to, to see? It'd really be nice to have that money for a long-term parking plan.
Mayor, councilwoman, no, I haven't had the opportunity to do that. I'm, I'm presuming that when that money comes into the state, there's, whatever it is, normally, there's some sort of breakdown by the state competitive process to the local level, and I'm guessing, given the timing of the year, it could be the allocation by the federal government of the community development block grant money, which is cited on locally, but I will report back to you in the next couple of days specifically on that.
Okay, I'm, you know, I'm still a rookie at this, and, and, you know, I'm just wondering, do we have a grant writer?
Mayor, councilwoman, we don't at this time, however, you later in the evening will approve a budget that does have a full-time grant writer in there.
Okay, because I, I, you know, periodically go on to the, the website for the federal domestic assistance grants, and there's so much money available, and it just feels like we need a grant writer so that we don't be missing out on the opportunities to be applying for these, these monies, so. Anyway, just want a long-term solution for that parking, so we don't have to be leasing any lots any longer than we have to.
Anything else? So what is the wishes of the council?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second motion?
I'll second that.
And a second? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to item C, lodgers tax agreed upon procedures, FY two thousand twelve dash two thousand thirteen. Ms. Graber?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, town manager. Before you, you have the lodgers tax agreed upon procedures report prepared by Accounting and Consulting Group. It is required by the state statute to audit vendors in municipalities that collect over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So you have the report, the original one was a draft, but the one that you have on site now is a final with our audit finding responses prepared by, with the help of the town attorney. And the process is that the lodgers tax advisory board had asked for us to at least audit all of the vendors during this audit cycle. The accountant was only able to do approximately nineteen of them, and that was probably the cause of the findings that we do have. So those are on page thirty-three of the report. It's probably what you want to probably look at, look at mostly. And the first one is insufficient internal controls over lodgers tax collections, and from the procedures that there were performed, there was multiple instances where they say the town of Tallas has insufficient internal controls in place of lodgers tax collection and monitoring. And it just details what the problems are and references the ordinance, and just trying to get these vendors to properly submit their information or contact the auditors when they're trying to get ahold of them to audit their records is one of the main problems. In discussion with the attorney and the manager, we've, you know, we've looked at some of our responses, which you can find on page thirty-four, and just trying to, again, refine our policies and our lodgers tax ordinances. I know last year, we came to the council reporting this, pretty much the same findings last year, trying to work with the attorney at that time, but overloaded with work. Hopefully, this one is going to save a while and won't be- Hopefully, this one is going to stay for a while and won't be.
He's got plenty of time.
He's got more, too. But, but he's, I mean, he's willing to help out and look at those, that lodger's tax ordinance. And also with the budget that we're going to present, the final budget, there is a position for a business manager within the finance department, and looking at that position and the fixed asset administrative assistant or finance assistant position to help out with these things that are lacking, the oversight, you know, some kind of training, looking and trying to get a quarterly setup of review to, you know, see what we can do to get these lodgers to actually get these records and get them to understand what they need to have ready when the actual auditors do come on site.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
Marietta, with regards to this ordinance and how it's written, do we have the ability to invoke or enforce lien without legal counsel? I mean, where the department has the ability to just outright invoke a lien, I mean, some of them are, I mean, there's an understanding of them being behind for whatever reason, collection or whatnot. But then there's some that are just extremely behind. So, if you look at the way the state of New Mexico handles grocery receipts taxes and delinquent vendors and that nature, they, there's no grace period. I mean, thirty days will let you go, sixty days, you're on the radar, ninety days, you have an outright lien filed at the county courthouse. So, I mean, do we have something in place like that with regards to lodgers? Because in essence, they're collecting that tax.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Gonzalez, that's one of the things that I've agreed with Marietta, that we try to develop a sort of, probably a software-driven scheduling program that will trigger milestone dates, such as filing a claim of lien. Now, municipalities have a tremendous advantage, frankly, in our taxing mechanisms, but even filing a claim of lien doesn't mean a collection. And it doesn't mean a collection until there's a attempt to refinance a loan on that property or an actual sale or disposition of that property. So, the town does a good job right now in enforcing the lodger's tax ordinance, but it's hard to enforce because the way we are able to collect lodger's taxes requires reporting by the lodging entities. And they're not very well-educated in some cases, or in some cases, it's the last bill they pay. So, I think we're going to have to go through a constant cycle of education and enforcement, and we need to schedule that so it's routine in the new staff, the existing staff, and in some sort of collaboration between the legal department and the finance department.
Well, and I guess what I'm looking at in that is that that's a tax paid by the lodgers. So, that money in essence is to go from one hand to the next. It shouldn't be looked at as a bill to pay or a burden to pay because it's already been paid. I mean, when you check into that room, you're paying that bill. So, that's where I would say, I have the understanding that the invocation of a lien doesn't always mean that you're going to get paid, but I think, do we have anything within our ordinance, within our process that would allow us to go beyond that to forfeiture of, you know, assets? I mean, because there can only get to a point where we can go so far. You know, I mean, it's dependent upon what we have, and we have a pretty decent-sized advertising budget of which is paid by that lodger's tax, but to continually advertise and not, you know, get it on the back end just doesn't make any sense to me.
And Mr. Mayor and Councilman Gonzalez, by all means, we have the absolute right to file a claim of lien. Incumbent in that right is the opportunity to foreclose that lien. Now, those proceedings can be pretty burdensome, and that's probably why it doesn't happen very often. You know, there are certainly things we can tighten up. I don't think that there's a major overhaul needed by any means. And I think that there, almost every other entity that deals in lodger's taxes struggles with the same issues. It's not, I mean, ultimately, the town, as again, being advantaged as a municipality, municipal liens are, take priority over almost all other encumbrances in a bankruptcy proceeding, for example. They constitute automatic liens on property, so there's really little chance that we don't get paid eventually. It's just how much work we want to put into getting paid now. And that's a constant balance that we're going to try to, you know, strike a reasonable, a reasonable sort of process to move forward with.
And I guess, so for me, it's not about wanting to go after and shut down a business, you know, a hotel business, but the number-one concept that I learned in business school was you don't play with tax money. And that's in any format. So, you know, I would, I guess lodger's tax, grocery receipts tax, you know, whatever that tax is, that's allocated as tax. I mean, that's the whole reason it's being collected. So, just, I guess, looking for clarification and format.
And like Jacob said, we're going to look at that policy. And we do, this year, we actually did quite a few good collections on past dues and on the bigger ones that were past due. But I think it's education and letting some of these smaller ones know, and the bigger ones, when the transfer happens of a sale of a property, and that's, you know, between us and legal, to make sure we know that, because sometimes we don't know when a property has been sold.
Well, and I think, Jake, with regards to that, how would that be imposed? I get putting the lien on the property, but at the same time, couldn't we lien one of their most valuable assets, which would be their liquor license? I mean, that's what gets sold more often than not, where the only thing we have to go after that's tangible is the property.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Gonzalez, I'm pretty sure that the statutory mechanism to file the claim of lien is limited to their personal property, but I'm happy to look into that further. I mean, it's a good idea.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Peralta?
Yeah, Marietta, in this report, we have a number of properties that didn't give information in order to do the audit.
Right.
But these are properties that are paying their lodger's tax. We just don't know if it's accurate.
Right. They're paying their lodger's tax. We don't, we just couldn't, they didn't provide the records or didn't connect with the auditors at the time, or were out, or the records were at somebody else's place, you know, they're off-site.
I understand that, but I think in reports past that I've seen from auditors on this, they at least show in that column, first column, that here's the amount that was actually received by the town. And then on the other column saying they didn't receive anything from the vendor to make an audit. And in this case here, they're just blank, so it's like they didn't pay us anything over the year.
Right.
And so, this is kind of what Councilmember Gonzalez is coming from, is if you look at this report, it looks like we've got about twelve out of the, what was it, twenty or so that were audited, didn't pay us anything? But that's not correct, I know that.
Right.
So, what I'm trying to say is that this should be telling us exactly what they reported to us, not necessarily that it's accurate because they couldn't audit it, because they couldn't get the books.
Right.
So, that we would have a better idea as to who is actually not paying.
Right, and I see that on the, and I have last year's, too, and it had a few of the same type of things, but not very many. These, they had a couple last year, and so I think these properties are actually, if they send in the reports, and they don't, they have to send in the reports if they don't make anything. So, I'll have to verify with auditors on that and see if that's what those blanks really mean, because...
No, but the whole sheet is blank.
Right.
I mean, there's nothing on either side as to what was reported or what was received or trying to, give you an example here, let's look at Heritage Hotels.
So, I think what he did, because if I read on the bottom, I'm just looking at this one for one of them, there's not a page number, it's for one of the properties, it says that the property was unable to provide adequate documentation to support its remittance.
I'm sorry?
To the town. So, on the bottom of each one of them, it specifies what happens, therefore, the procedures were not performed on this, in this establishment. So, they didn't, they weren't able to audit them, but I know what you're saying, they didn't put what we had on our files. And I think that's why they did, because they didn't have anything to compare with what we had, even though these establishments could have had a remittance on some of these months. They didn't put anything in there.
But that's what I'm saying, is the report should indicate exactly what we received and then indicate that it was unauditable.
I'll have to double-check and clarify that and make sure that...
That's why I've seen reports before, is that, you know, here's what we received, but we couldn't audit it, so we don't know whether it's accurate or not.
Right. And I don't know, is it because they had so many that they couldn't get, that they just left them? Because I do have last year's, and we had a few of those, the same thing last year. So, I don't know if we just had more because they just weren't able to get the records. But I'll have to double-check with them and see if that's something we can, I can clarify.
I'm assuming they're picking up your records.
Mm-hmm. We give them the whole list of what we have on collections and, I mean, everybody that we have as a lodger, a lodger's establishment. And so, we give them, we give them the whole list. And they take our list, and they sort, and they pick whichever ones they, you know, we do like a random sort on it. But in this case, they wanted to do everybody, so they usually just got the people that they did have a response from and left the other ones out, because they didn't have enough time to keep on bugging them.
I understand that. I just wanted to see what was actually turned in.
I'll have to clarify that, because I can't tell you for sure that that's what it is, that they did have it. I'm pretty sure some of the months, they did have revenue reported, but I'll have to verify with them and either amend it if there's, if that's what you're saying, that maybe should be in the report.
Well, I'm asking them to do it, not you.
Right. No, 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 I know, but I have to verify with them and, you know, what that really is.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's that they just didn't have the backup to, we gave them ours, and we gave them the information that we had as a collection, because we have a report on every establishment that turns in their report on a monthly basis. So, we have that, that's what we give to them. And so, I just don't have that information in front of me.
I still have one question. This goes back to Councilmember Gonzalez's question about liens. Whether or not we collect a lien, it really doesn't cost us much to do it, correct?
That's correct. It's just the final fee.
But it does protect us in case of a transfer of property if we don't know the sale's going on.
Councilmember Peralta, that's correct.
And I think in the last year or two, we've had two or three change hands?
I'm aware of one.
And I think all three of them had delinquencies?
But I'll get, the one example that's come up recently is the Hampton Inn, and it was embroiled in a bankruptcy proceeding. And unfortunately, once a delinquency like that is taken out of the jurisdiction of our district court and into the bankruptcy court, we lose some of the leverage in the form of the lien, but we don't lose the priority of the debt. So, that's what makes it tricky, is the bankruptcy court, in the case of the Hampton Inn, actually canceled the lien, discharged the lien in order to make it a saleable property in order to fund the trust estate for bankruptcy, in order to then pay off all the creditors, of which the town is a priority creditor. So, that's the kind of thing that can allow things to fall through the cracks somewhat. But once again, I have every confidence that the town ends up getting paid eventually.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to clarify, I was just looking at one that I know we've received lodger's tax from, and there's not reported, so I think what they're thinking is they just didn't, since they didn't audit, they didn't want to report it in the report because it's, they didn't have anything to compare, so I can tell, because I know this one for sure, we have lodger's tax revenues all the time.
Thank you.
Counselor Hahn?
Marietta, I'm just concerned that on page thirty-four, we are enacting the auditor's recommended solutions. So, the establishment and implementation of personnel, do you have dedicated personnel in the office to do this, or you're just trying to catch, as catch can, as busy as you all are up there?
Well, and that's one of the main things. We do have the fixed asset finance assistant position that works on the lodger's tax, works with legal on the monthly reports to send them if they're late and if they're delinquent. We send those out to the vendors. So, we're doing initial things to do that, but with a new position, hopefully this business manager position, that some of those things that are not getting done to the fullest can be assigned to that position, you know, oversight of this and continuing working on with legal on the ordinance and the policies. So, we do have staff, but not enough staff time to do it to its fullest. But we do do, I mean, we're not letting things fall behind the...
No, but it recommends dedicated staff.
Yes.
And that's one of my concerns, is that you don't have the staff or the dedicated individual for one reason or another. Mr. Caldwell, section two on their recommendations, just defining what's, what is collectible. I'm not putting that very well, am I? And again, that's on thirty-four. Ordinances does not clearly define what revenues are included in gross rents. Are you looking into that, or has that issue been resolved?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Hahn, I am looking into that issue. What the town ordinance does is track the state statute for purposes of those definitions. What I want to do is kind of conduct a survey of other municipality and county ordinances to see what they do to further define without sort of hamstringing themselves, and to then follow up to see if that's successful and making any difference. I'm not, I'm a little bit reluctant just to go out and modify the ordinance on this single recommendation, but we'll do some homework and do some research and bring some recommendations back.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I guess just one real quick question that Counselor Peralta just brought up. At the same point, some of these entities, we'll take tossification rentals for an example, that have multiple properties, properties that are within the city and then some that are within the county, what's, I mean, is there any likelihood of making one uniform lodging, lodger's tax as opposed to, you know, making an appeal to the county under lodger's tax and making an appeal to the city under lodger's tax? Can we just have one taxing agency that knows the entire?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Peralta, I'm not aware of any reason we couldn't enter into some kind of MOU with the county to provide that service. I think it would, you know, I think it's sort of like all of the other things that we're discussing with the county. It's going to take some time to nurture and develop trust between the two entities, but it's certainly something we could add to the list of things that we might mutually benefit from. You know, one of the things I'll warn you about as you get more involved with the county is that then you start having these sort of overlapping audit findings or the potential for overlapping audit findings, and that could get complicated. But, you know, I think there is a way of sort of minimizing the risk if a memorandum of agreement or a JPA were properly drafted. So, it's something we could consider.
Mr. Mayor, what I'm talking about here is the fact that tossification rentals could have properties that they rent in five different jurisdictions. Ski Valley, Questa, Red River, Taos, Angel Fire, and each one of them has a lodger's tax requirement. And so, it's just, and they're probably all five percent, so it's not like there's a different rate between the people, but they have to, depending on their property, they have to report in different areas. But they're, when you're talking about those people who do vacation home rentals, that's what they get into. But they have a responsibility to report to everybody.
What's the wishes?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
And a second. Further discussion.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Thank you. So, we'll go on to item D, Amendment Number Five to CH two M. Hill, O'Me, Mistress Penosa?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is Amendment Number Five to CH two M. Hill, O'Me, off of contract TT zero... Off of contract TT-09-95 in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine ninety-eight and seventy-six for a period of one year, starting July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015. This is a continuation of an eight-year contract that went out to RFP. And the, the total increase for this would be 3.75, and it is based on the CPI, which is permissible under the original contract. And I do have a representative from CH2M, Hill, OMI, in the audience if you have questions that I can answer.
This was part of that reasoning when we went back to the landfill issue of saying sometimes a 2% flat increase per year doesn't do what's, what it's supposed to do. And that's where, you know, I had mentioned back then, reflecting increases off the consumer price index is probably the, single-handedly the best way to conduct business because of the fact that you follow the CPI, much like CH2M does, Waste Management, all these larger organizations that we deal with follow CPI. They, I mean, it's a very amateur management process, I think, to take a, a flat-out rate of 2% to have to come back and hit the general public again with another 2% because the increase comes at 3.75. So I guess for me, within the confines of their contract, which almost every contract that we negotiate with some of these guys, that clause is in there because it's based on, on CPI and the movement of CPI. So when we're looking at these processes and when we're, when we're budgeting, I think it, it behooves us all that we follow the CPI as opposed to just a very amateur 2%. We can live with that this year because then we're always going to be behind the ball. So, I mean, I don't have an issue with it because I know it's built into their contract, but CPI moves, we're moving with it. And, and in our budgets, we may not have allocated for it, much like in this, in this scenario. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, which CPI are you using? There's a number of them.
Give me one second. Let me get to that. It's the urban consumers, is that what it is?
Oh, it says here it's all urban consumers, Congress.
All, all urban consumers.
Oh, what?
All urban consumers, it's, it's part of the attachment, Councilmember Peralta. And there's this real funky formula up on the top that, that Miranda and I actually worked through and called a representative from CH2M to try and understand, or better understand, how they arrived at 3.75. So, and we did that just this afternoon.
The reason why I'm asking that is because there's a number of different CPIs that are used in different industries. And if you take the national one that's used by the networks, it's only about a 2% increase. So this is the reason I'm asking the question is, by using this CPI, is that the standard for this type of industry or not? And could we find out?
It... Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Peralta, if I understand the contract correctly, the adjustment factor is actually a little more complicated than just applying CPI. There's, there are two indexes that are utilized. One is the, the all urban consumers index as a CPI factor. And then there's a, what's called the employment cost index for compensation for civilian workers, not seasonally adjusted. And each of those factors is divided by one-half and added to each other. And then there's a, according to the contract, an automatic one-point adjustment to the combination of those factors. So you're probably right. The real CPI change is probably closer to 2%, a little above 2%, but when you add in that additional point, it gets you the three and...
Seventy-five.
Three-quarters percent increase. And this is a contract that, that we signed up for for essentially this being the last of four two-year terms where it's an automatic renewal unless we gave notice 120 days prior to the expiration date for this last two-year term. It's certainly a good opportunity to start having this conversation. Two years goes fast and we're going to have to figure out what to do again. But, but I hope that, you know, it's a, it's actually like, it looks like an algebraic formula in the contract.
I'm just, I'm just bringing it up because, you know, we shouldn't talk about it as being CPI if it's not just the CPI. And, and so looking at it and negotiating a new contract, if this is the last year of this term, I think we should, we should be looking at that. I'm not saying that it isn't a reasonable figure. I'm just trying to understand it. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yes. French, thank you. Clarification, Mr. Caldwell. RFPs need to go out at the end of the third year of, or is it four years?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Hahn, a contract of this amount can be extended up to a period of eight years. What, what was in the initial RFP would have contemplated an eight-year contract.
I have a number of problems with OMI. First of all, I've, I've asked to look at this contract, have not received it yet. So I'm loathe to approve something I haven't read, as Ms. Renee will tell you. I like to read. That being said, whoever the OMI representative is, I would like to get a complete breakdown on all costs. That would include labor, expenses. I am loathe to just approve this. I'd rather go month-to-month for the time being until we settle this issue. I do not believe that we should wait for a year to begin to reconsider other alternatives. This is extremely expensive, and I need to look at that contract. I am not the least bit interested in looking at algebraic formulas without being able to look at the books. I realize that this is just a continuation, but in order for me, as one counselor, to continue this, I do need to look at that contract. So for the moment, let's keep the operation running, but it's my feeling that until we can do our homework now, we go month-to-month. I have lots more to say, but I really want to take a good look at that contract. And I'm, I'm not terribly interested in discussing it tonight. I want to do my homework. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, after hearing Counselor Hahn's arguments, I think for me, it's... When you sit in an elected position, you, you're tasked with that, with that duty to do your homework. But I think through some of that, you know, and what's, what's the reasoning behind not, not getting the contract to you? Is there communications? Is it not prepared? And I know some companies have issues with releasing the contract prior to getting an approval because of the fact of the competitive RFP process. I don't think that falls within those, those purviews, does it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, no, no, this is a public record. I didn't know of the request. I, the contract is readily available. I found it, I mean, I didn't actually look at it till today myself, but it's on our, it's in our document depository, repository.
And to be fair, Mr. Caldwell and Councilman Gonzalez, maybe I didn't use the right terminology. I think it may have just been an email or perhaps even a verbal request, so I don't want to point the finger, but I am going to stick my heels in the ground now and say, no contract, no go. I need to read it stem to stern. And I realize this is just a continuation and just an amendment dealing with an algebraic formula that relates to some sort of CPI index, but I got to tell you, that's meaningless to me. I need the contract in total, all expenses, labor, chemicals, everything. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think in, what would that do to us, French, to go on a month-to-month with something like this? I don't, I, I, and again, I question whether or not we can, being that it's, it's in there for renewal, it's in their contract for CPI adjustment, regardless of the equation or how it works out. I would more venture to say that we'd, we'd have to move through with the approval and in the meantime, prior to the next year's renewal, give Counselor Hahn that ability to sift through that contract. Where, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, I, I believe that would be a question for, for legal counsel. However, I, I would imagine that if it were a month-to-month, the rate would increase accordingly. Having it for, for the next, having amendment number five approved for the next 12 months would give us an opportunity to start the RFP process since we're, we're nearing the, the term of the contract itself, so...
You know, the, Mr. Mayor, one more thing, French, the one thing I don't want to do is, is, is put the city in the position of becoming the city that, that, that basically doesn't stick by its contract terms of what we've agreed to. Again, you know, we've gone through this with other issues and saying, oh, well, we don't like that part of the contract right here, right now, and yet we've agreed to it. Because I think that will echo sentiments across the board with any, any operation, any large-scale operation that we need to do business with will, will fix a rate in there that's going to say, hey, I don't, I'm, I'm putting something in there for uncertainty. And that's the type of climate I don't want to create within, within this municipality. Because as a business owner, as, as somebody that's educated in business, it's an unfair practice, number one. But number two, I, I think it's completely irresponsible for us, especially if we've already engaged in a contract and they're well within their operational guidelines.
Jacob, you want to address it?
Sure, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I think it is a legal question. My legal interpretation of the contract is that it automatically renews as the town has not given the contractor 120 days' notice of our intent not to renew. Now, there is a termination provision in the contract that allows us to give 90 days' notice of termination. So as of this moment, what I'd say is that we're bound by the terms of the existing contract. The purpose of the amendment is to clarify the, um, the base price adjustment that's been affected by increases in CPI and ECI. Those, I mean, if we had to engage in a legal argument about whether that kicked in automatically or not, you know, we would just take our chances. But my suggestion is that if we seriously want to consider asking for the contract amount or any of the terms to be revisited, we'd do it in light of that 90-day termination provision and work with that kind of timeline rather than... I mean, I don't think we have the unilateral right to engage in a month-to-month contract based on the language of the existing contract is the bottom line.
Counselor Peralta?
Just for clarifications, is this the last year of this contract?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, this, this would be the last two-year term. The term provision of the initial contract says the initial term of the agreement is for two years, commencing July 1, 2008. Thereafter, this agreement shall be automatically renewed for successive terms of two years each for a total duration of eight years unless canceled by either party, party not less than 100 days, 20, I'm sorry, 120 days prior to expiration.
So, so this amendment here is for two years, not one year?
The amendment, the, the purpose of the amendment, Counselor Peralta, is really to identify this year's budget. It really helps the finance department, both for auditing purposes and for purposes of budgeting, to put in this fiscal year's budget amount. But from a legal perspective, we are engaging in the last two-year term of this eight-year contract.
So the, the contract itself is already automatically renewed because we did not give notice for two years?
That's correct.
So the only thing that we could do would be to give notice of termination in 90 days if, if we wanted to change something.
Yes, and, and Mr. Mayor and Councilmember...
And in that case, we would actually have to go out for RFPs for somebody to run the treatment plan, whether it's our current contractor or someone else.
That, there would be that risk for sure. And I should say one other thing, that in the annual price adjustment, there is a provision for the parties to negotiate that price adjustment. And the default, should the parties not be able to achieve an agreement, is this formula that I've tried to describe. Now, I don't know what attempts were made to consider other variations of an annual price increase, but at this point, I, you know, it, the town doesn't necessarily have the discretion to force that. That's my point.
And I would agree with that based upon the fact that this is, proper notices haven't been done according to the contract. But I'm just saying is that to go forward would be that...
Sorry?
What, what the town would, would need to do if it didn't like the agreement that we're entering or that we've entered into by default, would be to give notice of termination. And if you did that, then we would have to be in a position to have an RFP ready to go out to...
Assume, assume the operations?
To assume, for somebody to assume the operations of the, of the plant, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Hahn?
Right. So what I'm hearing you say in this discussion, Mr. Caldwell, then, is we can terminate in 90 days. If we give notice tonight, we could terminate in 90 days.
That's also correct.
And I, I, I just have a hard time approving an almost 1 million-plus project that I know very little about. I feel that we probably have the expertise to bring it in-house. And I don't have the fear of accountability. I think we have adept staff. So I just, I just don't, Councilman Peralta and Gonzalez, I just don't have that fear that if we give notice of termination today or come back in executive session and really tease this apart, perhaps that is what we should do, table this and come back to it. I just don't have that fear. I, I think, quite frankly, we're being gouged, and that's my personal opinion. And it's a huge contract, and I'm just not going to lie down and watch this thing go on and on without some kind of explanation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? If I could, I would, I guess, address to the fact that, you know, whether or not we have the capabilities in-house to do it, I think, I mean, the overall aspect is, is that it encompasses so much more than just being able to run a wastewater treatment facility. And that falls within the purview of now EPA standards, having basically chemists on staff to do the work that CH2MIL does. I mean, I, I get the concern with the dollar amount. I mean, these, these, these companies are extremely enormous. They're extremely in-depth at what they do, and they're good at what they do because they've made that investment. So for, for me, my fear would be in to do an injustice, to bring it in-house and us not have the capability, the staff, nor the budget to, to, to pay out in-house. Whereas these contractors can negotiate off of collective bargaining. This, you know, the city's not going to have that, that, that ability, you know, and that's, that's my fear. And be it as it may, you know, that's, that's just the world of commerce. But that's, that's where we operate, and that's, I, I just... But that's where we operate, and I just don't see us having that ability.
See the representative from CH2?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Miss Kontu actually went down to the plant, visited it. I believe Mr. Gonzalez and Counselor Peralta know exactly what's going on. Last... Was it... When was it? Friday for the luncheon? I did invite you down there. Unfortunately, I didn't know anything about you needing to see the contract. I would have... Glad you've given you a... Excuse me, a copy of it. You know, there's a lot of interesting points to this whole conversation, especially me not knowing where you're coming from in terms of renewing the... Mending the contract. You know, our company is here to help and support the Towne House. You know, just for instance, we have... We're working with GE on a warranty issue. And I'm using very high-level, our attorney's expenses and also very highly-ranked officials in our company to work on leveraging warranty issues. To repair one of the membranes that Councilwoman Kontu has seen, those membrane modules are around $800, $1,800 apiece. Right now, we have 10 of them that are out of commission, so you're looking at around $18,000 that we're protecting for the Towne House, trying to get that under warranty. Another one is JWC. Our headworks is in not necessarily the best condition just because of the hydrogen sulfide gases that come into the sewer system, and it does wreak havoc on everything in there. We were actually able to leverage with our regional support and our attorneys at no extra fee to you guys, them to come in and finally repair it on their dime. And that was right around $20,000 savings to you guys because otherwise, the town would have had to pay it because it was actually an engineering flaw. Other stuff that we do for you guys is a stormwater prevention plan. That's a lot of manpower that we have to do to make and monitor that plan. Right now, I'm actually looking at working with another regional support for spill containment policies for... Based off of EPA, anything over 55 gallons of oil, anything has to have been in this plan. That's even dealing with Kit Carson electric transformers that have oil. Anything that can leave a sheen on the water, I have to have a plan and contingency. So I'm working on that right now. SCADA support. I just spent $800 for remote support. Right now, I'm working with French to get a service contract for the entire water system. If we would have had that contract in line with the Towne House, with the water SCADA that is actually in need of maintenance, I spent $900 for six hours of support. You know, that's a rebatable item to you guys. K-Turbo, I'm having a technician coming out to work on the blowers because they came... They're not working. I'm able to work out of my budget to get this stuff repaired. And right now, I would believe the Towne House is on a financial lock because of the end of the fiscal year. I'm also working on new plans for the MIR, and that's lab regulations based off of EPA recommendations. Have regional support working on that. Sledge hauling. Another instance where our company has been there for you is sledge hauling. Just two weeks ago, French, we lost the sledge hauling truck. Sledge has to get hauled. Just like that, we made a phone call, we had roll-off containers come up, and that is $800 a pop for each bin that they take down to Rio Rancho. If you didn't have that capability, you would be stuck in the water with sludge and you'd be out of compliance pretty quickly in terms of nitrogen and the removal of the solids. And it would affect a $10 million plant that we operate for you. One of the other parts of this is the chemicals. With the new system that we have online, we actually have to buy sodium hypochlorite and citric acid for maintenance clean of the membranes. So we're associating it with chemical costs, which are always increasing. And that's part of the other reason why there is this $30,000 increase. Because instead of the Towne House managing that money for the chemicals, it's actually in our contract that we actually take that responsibility for you. So the extra $30,000 increase from this amendment is to purchase the chemicals for the facility based under our contract. And really, the main part of all this, of our contract, is in labor. I'm having, on average, I think French is on industry standard, we're looking at around 3%, 4% budgeted overtime. That's just budgeted. Our actual overtime expenditures are, I'd have to double-check, right around 10%. So all the contract is doing is capturing the overtime. It's pure labor that we're capturing. And gone are the days where you could just leave the plant, you know, unmanned, you know, whether it be remote or, you know, physical operation. Gone are those days. You actually have to have SCADA up and running, which we're prepared to do in-house if we have to. We're still working with DeWalt Luther thing that actually set up the SCADA program. We actually have operators on call 24 hours a day, and that includes myself and the rest of the staff because we're so committed to each other that that's what we're there for. Now, anybody in the Towne House, there might be one, maybe one other person that has a Level 4 to operate the wastewater plant. He was a former employee of ours. So there is one other, you know, person in the Towne House that has a Level 4, but he has not been in operation, you know, operating a MBR plant because it's new technology, and he hasn't been in here to be able to understand the nuances. The price of our contract gives us the opportunity to leverage regional support to do this. Unfortunately, me being part-time utility director, when Mr. Almos Torres resigned, I stepped in, assisted French for three months. And it is a little difficult dealing with utilities when finances are really tight. And we do give you that little leverage of being able to operate the plant because dealing with sacred lands with the pueblo. We actually have, right below the plant, there's pueblo lands right there. They have stricter water quality rules than what the state of New Mexico does. And there is a huge compliance purpose right there. That is not just compliance. You just can't put, you know, a little Joe Bob that is, you know, needing a job or somebody needs to get somebody out, you know, back in the day. Oh, he's a good guy, but he's having problems, let's just send him down to the wastewater plant. The compliance issues in terms of political responsibility, you know, to the pueblo because of cultural reasons, they have cultural lands right below us. We have to give them pristine water. And our regional support allows us to exceed your expectations in delivering that. I'll be happy to visit with you anytime, you know, give you a tour of the plant anytime. So if you have any questions, you want to look at some stuff, there are probably some things that might be proprietary that I might not be able to assure to, but that'd be between, like Mr. Caldwell said, you know, between the attorneys to kind of dictate what that would be. I think Mr. Councilman Peralta understands that, so, you know, they dealt with that in the past. So I just have to double-check to see when I'm readily available to give it to you. You know, the books are always open, documents are always open because documents are actually your documents, they're not ours. You know, there's some proprietary stuff that we use for process, but that's about it.
And what is your name, sir?
Anthony Martinez.
Which would give you an idea, Mr. Martinez, if I don't even know your name and have never even seen the contract. And now I'm being asked to vote on a $1 million continuation that now I find out, and I'm glad Councilman Peralta kind of teased this out, that really, if we go down on this tonight, it's for two years. I think the public needs to know that. So this is the last two-year approval. I'm also, you know, I've got to tell you, Mr. Martinez, I would like to meet with you, set it up. I want to learn everything about this operation. I have serious, serious concerns. Not terribly different from the concerns we heard expressed by the staff at Holy Cross tonight about managers managing employees. And as a small businessman, don't know that this is true in OMI's case, but I'm going to guess that OMI may be just... Just my guess, charging us for $40 an hour per employee and paying the employee 10 or 15. So those are the kinds of things I just kind of want to take a look into. And if that's proprietary, I'm going to have an issue with that. So I don't mean to argue with you, forgive me, sir. But I do want this conversation to move forward forthrightly. This is a whole bunch of money, and I... We need that money for potholes. Thank you. I do appreciate your coming tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Actually, let me clarify that, if that helps the discussion, and that is that the bill's paid to CH2M Hill because the sewer plant and the water plant are enterprise funds. Those are dedicated revenues based on the rates we collect and cannot be moved for other purposes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll make contact with Councilman Hahn, see if we can set up a field trip to the plant and get the lowdown. I just handed the manager the entire contract and all the amendments that we're discussing tonight so that he has an opportunity to review that before we meet. And we'll try and prepare Councilmember Hahn to provide you with the invoices and the other things that you had requested earlier.
Well, I'm sure... And, French, thank you. You've always been top-notch. And, Mr. Martinez, I'm absolutely confident you're the same way. But I need to learn about this, and I am very concerned about the longevity of this contract and the incredible expense. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, just a little bit of maybe to assist Councilmember Hahn. The approval of this contract, as we indicated before, if after the time that you've had to an opportunity to investigate the contract and the operation, if you feel that it's out of line, you can still come back to the council and say, "We need to consider termination at that point." So the fact that it's a two-year extension doesn't mean that if... That it shuts it down after tonight and we can't do anything else. We can still come back and revisit it at any time during the next two years if we feel that there's something awry. And so, you know, so this, I'm just trying to say is that the approval of this doesn't give you the inability to continue your investigation and request for something else to happen in the future. It just, it means that either way, we've got a 90-day window we have to work with.
Thank you.
Just to make sure that everybody's on the right page, Mr. Caldwell could probably find, you know, double-check on Amendment Number Three. It was... The original contract was amended because we did hold our price for quite some time because of financial restrictions. And that amendment was signed in 2012, and it did extend... It limited... It went from the two-year, every two years, to every four years starting in 2012. So this contract will go to 2016 and with a yearly amendment for approval. Now, like we mentioned before, you know, we've held our price before to, you know, and held costs. So it is, we have done that in the past to work with the Towne House. It's just not a pure gouge. Like I said, this is year... We're going to year seven, and this is only Amendment Number Five. So we had... We have held our price once or twice already to work with the Towne House.
Well, true enough. But let's call a spade a spade. Year seven, but actually, it's 14. And now I hear a termination date or renewal in 2016. So the longer we talk, the longer this thing gets and the hotter I get. So we've got our work to do.
Counselor Gonzalez? Jake, I think you have something to add?
Mr. Mayor, I think just lining out to the auspice, and this question is probably more legal. Once the city engages in a contract like this, do we... We don't have any purview over what they pay their employees, right? I mean, I get the whole expansion of public funds, but this is a contract between a public entity and a private entity who's not bound by, I guess, the same auspice to release what they pay their employees, right? I mean, that's kind of a confidential...
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Gonzalez, you know, I would really have to take a close look at the contract before I could answer that question. You know, it's entirely possible that included in the deliverables by the contractor are things like their rate schedule for their employees, but I can't answer it right now. I haven't seen a provision that I think speaks directly to that. It doesn't sound to me like CH2M Hill is interested in withholding information. So it seems like informational meeting with Counselor Hahn and anyone else that wants to be... To participate is being invited and can begin to shed light on this. Now, I do want to clarify that I'm not aware of the language of Amendment Three, but at the end of the day, it doesn't really change the analysis. This is still a contract through 2016 and always was, subject to the town's right to give notice 120 days prior to any expiration period, which the town has not done. And whether that was triggered two years ago as part of a four-year renewal or was triggered 120 days ago as part of a two-year renewal really is moot at this point because the town didn't do it. There is still a 90-day termination provision, and as has been articulated, that still allows for this conversation to evolve, hopefully productively. It seems to me like, really, where we are is just the need to exchange information and to better understand the nature of the contract, the services provided, and what our alternatives are.
Mr. Mayor, and with regards to that, Counselor Hahn, just coming out of the business, you know, the business world, business side of things, even with regards to some of the large-scale contracts, the one thing I've always heard is, you know, I have huge heartburn with employees out of organizations coming to us as city councilors because of the fact, much like even our employees. I want our employees to be open, I want to be open with our employees, I want them to come to us. But at the same point, in resolving disputes, still following that chain of command. And maybe I misheard you, but...
I think you did.
But for me, it sounds like, you know, the issue for you, in some sense, revolves around CH2M Hill billing for a $40 an hour employee and paying... revolves around CH2M billing for a forty-dollar-an-hour employee and paying them twenty-five. You know, the, the thing that I think encompasses business as a whole, and that much of this conversation revolves even around the minimum wage standards that's being proposed, is that a twenty-five-dollar-an-hour employee is not a straight twenty-five-dollar-an-hour employee. You know, they're probably more realistically a thirty-eight-dollar employee with the matching contributions that, that employers make, much like the city. So I guess under those auspices, under those guidelines, just please keep that in mind in your research to go through, because that's, that's what I was hearing.
Thank you so much. I think you misheard me. But I think an interesting aspect of this, Jacob, is if we had to give one hundred and twenty days' notice, this current administration wasn't even in office one hundred and twenty days ago. So I'm going to guess that the previous attorney notified the manager, and the manager notified the previous administration that the OMI contract was coming up, and this was our time to adjust it if we wanted to within the one hundred and twenty-day term limit. I don't know that that was done. But that is part of the problem here tonight, and that's part of the reason we're having this angst.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just briefly, I think the bigger-picture analysis is the town needs to be assured that there's a better option before it considers such a notice. The town didn't have the option of giving one hundred and twenty-day notice that it wasn't going to agree to a price increase. The, the simple options contractually were one hundred and twenty days' notification that the contract is going to terminate. Now, as it happens, we continue to operate with a termination provision. But I would be uncomfortable suggesting that, that the town is in a position to do anything other than explore available options before even suggesting such an action, because this did involve elaborate RFP process. The contractor was the, the most responsive respondent to that process, and I think there's a certain amount of trust that needs to be placed in those decisions. Going forward, there are, you know, several contracts that terminate at this point during the year. And you're going to, as a counselor, have to get comfortable, and, you know, it's going to take some time to get an understanding or to, to develop an understanding of how those contracts are going to come at you, and they're going to come at you quickly.
Understood, Jacob. But I am hoping that our new manager will actually be notifying us way in advance of one hundred and twenty days so that we can start reviewing these contracts with informed judgment. But for this thing to just appear, you know, Friday night, or Saturday morning, as the case was in my situation, and for me to go, oh, gee, I requested that contract, I don't have it, oh, it must be here. And I look and see this ridiculous algebraic rhythm, algorithm, I'm, I'm upset. I need to be informed. And one hundred and twenty days notwithstanding, we have a new council, and we're looking at everything with fresh eyes, and this is a whole bunch of money. So, and Councilman Gonzalez, I'm just, I could, I could say, I could, I could, we don't have to talk about wages, I could use the example of thirty thousand dollar price increase in chemicals. We could go on and on and on and on, and nickel and dime this thing to death. The problem that I'm having is if it was just nickels and dimes, I maybe could sleep. But we're talking millions of dollars for a long amount of time. So that's my concern. Yeah. Anyway, thank you, everybody, for your time. Mr. Martinez, I'm grateful for your time.
Counsel, what's the wishes?
Look for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve.
Second?
And a second. Further discussion? There is a ninety-day clause. Possible.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
No.
Thank you. A lot of good discussion. So go out to be contract TT fifteen seventeen with Sotomayor and Associates. Mr. Espinosa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a consideration and possible approval of contract TT fifteen dash zero nine, oh, I'm sorry, fifteen dash one seven with Sotomayor and Associates for the engineering of the water project, which is being referred to as the Wymer Hills aerial waterline project. This is being supported out of the Water Trust Board money that is currently identified in the budget, and the total amount of their engineering fee is three hundred and twelve thousand, seven dollars and nine cents. This project did go out to formal RFP, and they were the only respondent. And I will stand for any questions.
Just one quick question, French. On these RFPs that go out, what is your normal publication or how do you send out notices that, that these contracts are, are coming out?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, this particular one was advertised in the, in the Albuquerque Journal and on the website. And in addition to that, in the, in the Taos News. And normally what happens is, once, once it's posted on the website, all the plan rooms get it, and it pretty much goes out nationwide. We've, we've had, on other RFPs, we've had interested parties from as far away as, as Florida for very small projects. So it does, it does circulate pretty well.
Thank you. Mr. French, I want to thank you for arranging the meeting that we had where we could look at this plan in detail. And it's perfectly, not only exemplary of your management style, but gets me on the fast track as far as learning and able to ask questions and that kind of thing. So I found that to be very useful, and I just want to thank you for that professionalism and setting that meeting up. Thank you.
French, real quick on this, extension of sixty-five water services to the Wymer Hills areas. When will we know, I guess, the impact with regards to, to fire rating that we get out of there? Because obviously hydrants will be installed in that process as well, right? Is this part of that management plan?
Yes.
So when, when will we know, I guess, from the state fire marshal, whether or not we've upgraded in ISO?
The ISO rating, Councilmember, what we, what we can do is through the, through the design process, we can get the ball rolling with that and send the information straight to the fire marshal. And in addition to that, what I'll do is I'll get the chief, Chief Gonzalez involved in that as well. And we'll start the process rolling and, and try to determine some timelines. And obviously, when the project is complete, that'll be the ultimate reporting that we would need to submit.
And, Mr. Mayor, one of the reasons that I think that's important information to disseminate to the public is that I think a lot of times that's often left out what that does to homeowners' insurance rates, and where everybody's at with regards to just pinching pennies. I mean, every, every dollar helps. And sometimes that in itself makes a difference, just because of the fact that now they can not only lower insurance rates, but property insurance rates, everything within that region starts to be affected. Plus, it gives the city a better rating as well, too, even with regards to our response. So when you get that message out there, that'd be great.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, is this area part of the newly annexed, or old annexed, that we haven't provided services for yet in the past?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Cantu, it is in the old part of the Wymer area that we have not provided services to. It, it's, it's not part of the newly annexed area.
Okay. Thank you.
What is the wishes of the council?
Look for approval, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Not possible.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to item F. Contract with UNM Taos. Mr. Bellis, thank you, French.
Thanks, French.
Mr. Mayor, I'm actually going to defer to council on this, in that council drew up this contract.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is a one-year renewal of the contract with UNM Taos to videotape and make available to the public on both Channel twenty-two and the website. All town council meetings, planning commission meetings, some historic preservation committee meetings, and up to twenty-five additional meetings at the request of the town. The last contracts were for thirty-five thousand dollars each year and included ten thousand dollar equipment allowances. The RFP that UNM Taos responded to provided for those equipment allowances for those first two years of contract. So we've taken that out. I spoke with Louis Moya earlier this morning, and he wanted to make clear that if we needed to purchase any additional equipment, that we would either have to purchase it, or if UNM purchased it, that, that they would maintain it in their name. So I think it's important to let you know about that. But in all other respects, this simply takes the ongoing videotaping, streaming, and editing and producing scope of work from prior contracts and extends it for an additional year.
I know we do have somebody here from UNM. If you want to address this, or... Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
You should probably pass your bedtime.
It is, but it's been an interesting meeting. My name is Bill Kneef, and I started the station about thirty years ago. I'm, I'm here on, on behalf of Mr. Moya. I'm not directly involved with the station any longer, but he, I believe the county commission meeting ran long today, and everything got stacked up. So he felt that if you had any questions, I'll either answer them or defer to Mr. Moya.
I know a request was made today by Miss, Councilor Han about a CD that was presented by one of the speakers, and the possibility of putting that on Channel twenty-two. Is that, would that be an additional cost, or is that something you guys could do within this contract?
Does that pertain to the Kit Carson Park? I, I'll go out on a limb here. I don't see that it would create any extra expense, and I think it would be simple to, to do that, to list it in the paper and air it. The only question I would have as a, as a former manager of the station is to be sure that we have written permission to use it. The problem I always encountered was when something was done in a nonprofit arena and was done strictly for information, sometimes we forget that people had to be paid, and there was a budget, and we don't want to get in trouble just assuming that it's, it's okay to air it. But I imagine it would be. Usually with public access, there's no problem. But we can check on that, and I'm, I'm sure we could do that.
And that was one of the questions that was asked, if he would get approval before it was put onto. Thank you. Counselor?
Bill, real quick, if we could just address, and I'm not sure that you can address it, but the compatibility issue. I've had several people that either rely on this thing for internet service, and for some reason, Apple won't load. I just tried loading it even here in council chambers, and it won't load. So can we look at compatibility, what that takes to, to make every operating system compatible?
It's, you're right, I'm not the person to, to really answer that question. I know that, and I've talked with Mr. Moya about that. It is difficult. When you're streaming, it's very hard to, to get to all platforms all the time. But I'll relay that to him and see if there's something we, we can mitigate it at least.
Can you just ask him, maybe some of that is combined with bandwidth? And now that Kit Carson is doing the implementation of their broadband and looking for anchor institutions, and I think the city being one of their anchor institutions, maybe a good time to, to free some of that up and really get that out there.
Yeah, I'll pass that along. Yeah, Mr. Moya has, has a law degree, but he also has a master's degree in, in audiovisual multimedia, so he's, he's the guy that can really tell you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Kneef, I, as you probably would have guessed, have a number of questions about this as well. And we may need Mr. Moya here, because perhaps, Mr. Kneef, you can answer some of these, but what is our Comcast franchise fee paying us a year? The records that I've been able to dig up indicate thirty-two thousand. Is it still that? Do we know?
It always, it, for years and years, it was about five percent of their gross that went into the general fund. I'm not sure if it's done exactly that way, but for many years, the, the five percent went into the general fund, and the rationale was that they used the right-of-ways of the town. And, and in return, they, they rebate that back. And then a portion of the money that goes into the general fund is, is used to conduct Channel twenty-two.
The twenty-five thousand. So I guess I'm just wondering where the other seven thousand is? Just curious. I'd like to know about that. It's not a whole lot of money, but since we are the fiduciary body, I've, I've gotten complaints, Bill, and I don't know that they're true or not, so I need to verify it. It used to be that council meetings and other town events would be rebroadcast on twenty-two, and ostensibly, that's no longer happening. So, for instance, if, it's past your bedtime, which it is for both of us, we would be looking forward to seeing this amazing body at work tomorrow morning. I understand that's not happening anymore, and I'm just wondering about that, because that used to be part of the service. Another question that I had was that, in addition to, Mr. Caldwell, the, the, all the town council sessions and four historic preservation meetings a year and all of that, it used to be that other local events, ballet, sport reports, that kind of thing used to happen. And that's not happening anymore. Or at least, well, you know, Bill, I don't really know, but I, I think I would like to know what all of the programming is on not only the internet, but especially on Channel twenty-two. Because essentially, I'm wondering, I'm wondering what we're getting for our buck. Are we getting the very best deal? I, I have a question, as you might have guessed also, about the RFP status. From what I can gather, Mr. Kneef, we're in year three of a four-year process? I'd like verification on that. We're on year two? Okay, on a four-year? Okay, so maybe, do you know, Mr. Caldwell?
Well, I think everyone's on the same page, just being said different ways. We're culminating the second year.
Yeah.
We're about to enter into, if this were to be approved, the third year.
I guess, okay. And it's a, so we're culminating to getting ready to move into three on a four-year RFP, on a four-year contract.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Han, this, it's hard, because each of these contracts is different. In this case, there was an RFP issued. The response set forth a four-year proposal. The town didn't necessarily agree to the entire four years of that proposal. It agreed to the first year, and then extended to the second. And we can continue, continue to do that for the duration of those four years.
Right. Right. Thanks. So I guess I would like a more exacting...
I'm sorry.
It's, I, you know, I'm going to stop, because I can't multitask either. But I, I would like to know what the rest of the programming is. And kudos to staff, by the way. This guy's, this guy in the back's been up for like eighty-two... This guy's, this guy in the back's been up for like, uh, 82 straight hours. And, and he's awesome. Uh, but that does take me to another question, and that is, and, and this is probably my own ignorance, Mr. Kneef, but this is, uh, the University of New Mexico. And I have on occasion seen an intern adjusting a microphone. But as a general rule, I don't see interns or students learning their craft and trade. Now, I don't know that that's true, but I just wonder. So I'd like clarification on that.
Well, Francis is a student and an excellent-
This man who's been here, uh-
Yes, sir.
82 hours today? Okay, and so he's being supervised by who?
We, uh, uh, Louis Moya, uh, runs the, basically the audiovisual program, and I can't tell you who the instructor is. But, and I, offhand, I don't know how many students we have, but I know it's very popular. And it would be easy to get you those numbers.
It'd be interesting to know. So, uh...
And, excuse me, I'm gonna forget if I don't comment on the, uh, the repeat programs. We have no problem doing more repeats. Uh, I think the, the rationale is, is that, uh, people can access the programming through the internet, uh, so we don't have to repeat quite so often. And frankly, in, in my day and age, we ran 24 hours a day because we, we repeated everything, literally 24 hours a day. That was just sloppiness. It wasn't, it, it didn't really serve the public.
Well, that's honest, and I appreciate that, but the complaint is, uh, "Mr. Frinch, we don't all use computers, but I do have my cable."
Correct.
So, that's an issue. So essentially-
And I'll, I'll pass that along. Francis just told me that, uh, that they would have no problem with increasing the repeats. Maybe we could come up with a schedule and make sure that everybody's happy with it.
Well, so essentially, um, I would like to review the scope of work. I would like to review that Comcast contract. I'd like to know where those bucks are going. I wanna make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck. And, um, um, I'd like to table this until we can get those answers.
Are we at liberty to table, Jake?
Um, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, if, this contract expires June 30th, so the, this few run is that, um...
We don't have meetings run?
There's, I mean, yeah.
Are we out of compliance with the Open Meetings Act at that point and giving clear accessible access to?
I don't know the answer to that. Probably not. I mean, the, the Open Meetings Act existed long before things were being filmed and televised, but...
Well, but I think the thing, if you, if you look at the Minus- New Mexico Municipal League, and I think, did you just go through the training? I think one of the first things they tell you is that, back in the day, precursor to cell phones and internet and everything else, that anybody had the ability to come in and just set a, a, a tape recorder down on, on the chair, and that was considered part of the open meetings. As the shift came with technology, I think it almost became expected that local government, state government would, would have access to open meetings. That's always been my concern, um, is, I mean, you get, you get individuals that are homebound, for whatever reason, but still have issues with wanting to be active in government. That's where I think we, we start crossing lines of, of being open.
But, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Gonzalez, certainly in the long run, um, you know, I, if the, the issue is one meeting, if we'd be found in violation of the Open Meetings Act, I doubt it. But certainly in the long run, uh, on a consistent basis, we need to be making efforts to, um, provide, uh, everyone access to these meetings. Well, one thing we did incorporate into this contract, similar to what we've tried to do with other contracts, is, uh, termination provision that allows termination with 30 days' notice. So, um, that's another place to hang your hat, if, if this is something you really wanna reconsider or find more information about going forward.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask one question of Bill. When it comes to, to programming, I know we were talking Comcast, but it's something that we had brought up in the past, and that was seen about trying to get some type of public access channel on direct or, or Dish, um, 'cause not everybody has Comcast. Has that been looked at?
It, it's difficult. We're, uh, we're operating through the cable, literally the cable, and, and I know that's limiting, and, and, um, we are able to, uh, use internet access as well, but it's, it's problematic. The, um, uh, the capability through cable companies goes way back to 1984, I believe it was, Cable, uh, Act. And, uh, it provided for some public access on those, on those for-profit channels. Uh, it was turned down, uh, a couple of years later, uh, bec- uh, as a restraint of trade to the for-profit companies, but still, most of the, uh, uh, cable companies see it as a plus to allow that kind of public, uh, viewing. Even though they don't get a profit, they integrate with their communities. So it's a bit tenuous even with, uh, cable, but, um, going outside of cable, I just, I, I, I really suspect it would be very difficult to work with Dish or one of those.
Okay.
Counselor Kuntu?
Yeah, this is more of a comment to, uh, Mr. Bellis. Being that we are a new council, you're new, Dan is new here, um, these contracts, you know, and the agenda come up to us a few days before the meeting, and it really makes it difficult sometimes to request public documents, uh, and to get them on time. And, uh, I, I think it would really be good, maybe if we could look at getting them, if, you know, I guess we're not mind readers, but maybe 60 days ahead of time, you know, to, to be better prepared, to have everything that we need, and, uh, you know, fully understand everything that we need to know. And, uh, you know, I, I, uh, I also noticed a huge difference between the prior, uh, company that was doing Channel 22 and, and then UNM, and, and I always counted on watching the reruns over and over, you know, whenever I could catch 'em, and, and that, that isn't happening anymore. And I'm, you know, not really always wanting to be on the computer to go to YouTube.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's, it's a hassle for, for some people, and for me, it's a hassle. And, um, you know, I, uh, I, I'm a Dish person, not a Comcast person on top of that. And so I, you know, I'm really disappointed I can't watch it at home. I have to go, uh, if I can, catch it somewhere else, and, well, these days, I'm here live, so...
Yeah. It's, uh, I, I agree with you. That's a serious, uh, issue. Uh, I think that we can, uh, increase the, um, I, I'm sure we can increase the, the repeats. And, um, I'm in the same boat. I can't get it on, uh, on Dish at home. Luckily, my wife is good on the computer, and she, she pulls it up, she's probably watching to- tonight. But, uh, I, it is, it is a challenge, and, and I'm sure we can come up with a schedule that, uh, that you all could approve.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could answer, uh, Councilwoman Kuntu's, uh, understandable frustration and that of, uh, Counselor Hunt. Uh, you're not gonna experience this every month. The majority of our contracts are termed to coincide with the fiscal year. So you're, you've got this whole barrage of contracts that are coming due June 30th. And that was compounded by a change in administrations in March and a lack of records, uh, on behalf of the attorney's office and myself, that, uh, these things sort of popped up late. Uh, for example, all the leases on the building, and we're very fortunate that Steve's office, uh, kept some pretty good records. Um, and we are learning at the same time you are, and, uh, all of this has to go through finance, then through the individual department heads, and then to the, it all funnels into one man, and that's the attorney. And with all the other challenges we've had, it's been very difficult and very unfair for Mr. Caldwell to have to read these on probably four days' notice and construct contracts and understand everything that's in there, and very often have no understanding of why they were constructed the way they are. And at the same time, we're, we're learning as you are, and sort of as a, um, shotgun solution, you will notice that one way to push these through the pipeline, but still reserve the opportunity to come back and examine them, is that we've agreed to put these rather short notice termination clauses in there, um, it, for 30 days. And in, in every case, including Mr. Moya's, um, it's been less a situation where the contractors have not been willing to come in to us, but being able to, in the midst of everything else, stack up our calendar with theirs to have them come in and explain everything in the current contract, and then what we want. And I know there are concerns, we would like to sit down, probably not serious concerns, but just more education, in that we're not just filming the meetings, we're really running a public access television station here. And, and there's tremendous upside to that that is not being used by this community. And if I could add as one last thing, uh, I, I share your frustration being a satellite viewer and not a cable viewer. However, um, and, uh, Mr. Caldwell probably know the details better than I, um, I think about six months ago, there was a real series of cases back and forth where both Dish and, uh, DirecTV actually started to tell, uh, local TV stations that to carry them, they were gonna have to pay Dish, or they were gonna have to pay DirecTV. And that applied to a lot of the major sports networks, too. And a lot of the networks just decided, "Well, we're just gonna drop off. We're not gonna pay this ransom." So I'm sure whatever arrangement we would make as a local entity would involve some sort of financial consideration to those providers that we'd probably find unsatisfactory, even if it was technologically feasible, and I'm not sure it is.
Counselor?
Actually, uh, the local stations were paying Dish to put 'em on the air.
Right.
And so, a couple of years ago, I think it was Channel 13 or Channel 7, uh, didn't wanna pay more. And so they went off the air for about a week. And, uh, finally decided they were gonna pay that, or, or Comcast, I mean, or, or Dish came back and said, "We'll go at the old rate," or whatever it was, but, but they're actually paying them to be on the line. And so there's been, uh, bills in Congress to, to make local access channels exempt from paying on satellite. So, but I don't know where that's going, but, but that's part of it. So they are paying to get up there, and, and those are negotiated prices, so to try to get a, a freebie?
Well, and I think I-
I think that's gonna be difficult.
I, I think, well, what it, what I would look at is, is that more along the pretenses of, most of those local networks, like you're looking Channel 7, if that's what you're thinking, or, or Fox, are all affiliated with large major networks, ABC, NBC, CBS, whereas this would be more just, you know, like, can we throw some access channels on on Channel 9, 1999 that you don't want?
If you don't pay that $5 a month to get to local stations-
You're not gonna get 'em.
You'll get the national stations, it could be out of Chicago or New York or...
Did you have anything else?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Uh, not for Mr. Kneef, though, but this brings up our organizational issue yet again of having an election on March 4th and taking office March 5th, contracts being reviewed in February, and the new council, 'cause it's gonna happen again, uh, trying to catch up. And I, I would, before our terms are up, uh, at least my term, which could be tomorrow, but, but maybe in three, three years and nine months, I would like us to, uh, seriously look at the way we run elections. I think the way the county does it is much more sane. You've got six months to get acclimated, you've got six months to come to meetings to hear about, "Hey, guys, it's 130 days prior to the OMI contract. We need to start looking at this." And then it is, as a newly elected official, I can request that information so that when the contract is due in June, I'm ready to go. So I would like us to seriously look at reorganizing the way we run elections around this place. It's absolutely unforgivable that you're elected one day and sworn in the next. That's just the stupidest thing I ever heard.
Well, here's the one, the, here, so here's one thing, we're bound by state law and municipal elections.
Well, that's changed.
Um, well, get that changed across the entire state, 'cause that's the only way it's gonna happen. But secondly, I guess this is just a personal feeling, is that if you run for the office, you probably should be pretty damn well-versed in the issues that are up and coming.
Mr. Gonzalez-
Including, including contracts. I mean, I have yet to step foot in this council chamber, is not informed.
You and I can talk about this offline, but just, because we don't need to disagree on such a small issue. We'll save our public disagreements for big issues like-
If I might offer a willow branch, uh, I would say that, but we will, what we'll, uh, what administration will start to do is, uh, we have every intent to follow through, uh, with the same concerns that I think council is doing, and we will start to, um, now that things are slowing down, set up a series of meeting on these individual contracts so that, and we will send out a notice to all the counselors, so that if they're available, they can attend those, too.
Thank you.
Call for the question.
Did we have a motion to, we don't, we don't have a motion. Do we have a motion, which, which is the council?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
A motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. This also has that same clause for 90 days?
30.
Or 30 days?
No worries, she's been up for it.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
No.
So, go on to item G, Amendment Number Three to Waste Management of New Mexico. Mr. Member?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kneef.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is a, uh, another amendment to a contract that we have. This is for our solid waste collection services, and, um, this contract amendment reflects, um, the actual billed amount versus the approved, uh, amendment that was approved at the beginning of this fiscal year 1213. This contract, um, sort of the same as, uh, CH2MHA went out for an RFP. The original term of the contract was to be for five years, starting November 1st of 2009, and ending June 30th of 2014. And the term of the agreement would be automatically extended for three additional one-year terms, unless either p- party shall provide the other with a written notice and an, its intent to terminate, and this contract is 180 days. So, this amendment here just closes out the current fiscal year 2013-14. We started with, and I have attached the contract, I think, yes? I have the contract and all amendments associated with this, um, with this, uh, service. So for 2013-14, we're closing out at 790,852.79. So just an additional 15,900 to close out, just the money portion of the contract. And the services are billed, um, they bill us according to the number of customers that we have and according to the rate schedule. Um, this contract does have a clause for a CPI increase during the renewal of the original, uh, contract date of November. So we will probably have to come back with an amendment and also a fuel adjustment. They hadn't done a fuel adjustment only once during this term of the contract, but that is something that's included in this contract for solid waste services. So, um, I will stand for any questions. We did review, I did go over this with the manager and the attorney, and this is one of the contracts that the manager says that, you know, we need to sit down and review it and look at what the original contract started with and how all the terms and conditions were, just to get themselves familiar with it. But, um, my, stand for any questions on this one amendment to the contract.
Counselor?
Um, Marietta?
Yes.
Thank you. So everything I needed was here. I could read, and I'm grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors, anything else? Not with the wishes?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion to approve? We have a second?
I'll second.
I'm a second. Any further discussion? Not called for vote.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
We'll go on to item H, Amendment Number Four to Waste Management of New Mexico.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is now the next amendment, number four to the contract with waste management, and this is for the upcoming fiscal year 1450. And we've based it on the amount of the previous year of, um, 790, uh, so much. So we have this one for 79900 for this current fiscal- So we have this one for seven ninety-nine hundred for this current fiscal year. Again, pretty much the same documentation and all the information attached.
Mr. Wishes of the council? Counselor Peralta?
Didn't you say that this contract year starts in November?
Yes, it started, well, the original contract started in November, and it took it-
But now the renewals are July?
Yes, the renewals are July, yes. Because it took it to the end of that one fiscal year, nine, ten.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure I understood the conversation.
What is the wishes?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. And no further discussion? Call for a vote.
Councilmember Cuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Thank you. Go on to item I, resolution forty thirteen, budget policies. Marietta and Mr. Bellis?
Same thing, Mayor, council, these next few items are all related to the budget. This one here is a standard budget policy that we adopt every year. I've had the redline version and the final version attached. Some of the summary of changes include the reserve requirements on section number one of the actual, of the actual resolution. And pretty much the last sentence, the town of town shall maintain a fund balance equal to one twelfth of the expenditures in the general fund, along with a requirement to establish an additional one twelfth by the end of fiscal year fourteen fifteen. Just to give us some working room to build up that reserve, but in still, you know, considering the needs of the council, if any further additional expenditures may be needed throughout the year. So we've added that to the, the item number there. And for the newer council members and the mayor, I don't know if you've had time to read, I don't know if you want me to go through each individual one, or maybe just the majority of the changes that were from last year to this year. So just-
And Counselor, Counselor Peralta?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I, before the meeting and walking over with, with the manager, I had asked if we could get reports to the council for contracts under the, the limit that the manager and the mayor have, between thirty and fifty thousand, or sixty thousand dollars, just a report of contracts that they issue that didn't come through the council, just as an informational, on a monthly basis, just so that we know contracts that they've had to do, that we may get questions on the street about, we would have the information.
Yeah, I'm sure that will be no problem with legal, because Cindy does keep a list of all those contracts, so Jake's, yeah, very good with that. So another clarification on the budget policy is the procurement, approval of small purchases, which is section ten, page three of eight on this document. We're just defining for the departments, the levels of procurement on, from zero to one thousand, best obtainable price in the best interest of the town, one thousand to ten, every effort to make, to obtain three oral or written quotations, and based on the description of the scope of work. And it just goes on further, five to thirty thousand, three written quotations, company letterhead. Thirty to sixty would be small bid process, including either a request for proposal or invitation for bids through the central procurement office. And then, obviously, all purchases over sixty thousand shall require formal advertising and competitive bids and proposals. Because we follow the state statute, we have our own internal policy with our own limits, and that's what these are identifying them. I also attached to the, the backup is the policy, the town and house procurement policy. Going into the new year, that's another one that we do need to redefine, make it a lot simpler and easier to read for the users of it, which are our departments, our department heads and administrative assistants. So that was another big change or clarification. The next thing is item B, the expenditure authority, where it has both the town manager and the mayor authorized to approve small purchases and contracts of less than thirty thousand dollars, exclusive of grocery receipts tax, and continue making sure all documentation is provided. And the mayor is authorized to approve all purchases and contracts of less than sixty thousand dollars, exclusive of grocery receipts tax. So those, and everything over that goes back to the town council for approval, anything over sixty. So we're trying to keep those expenditure authority limits sort of consistent with the procurement limits. So we've changed that one. The next one, same with the approval of change orders or amendments to contracts. Any change order amendment to a contract that has been previously been approved by the town council may be approved by the town manager or the mayor, providing the amount of the change order or contract amendment is not greater than thirty thousand dollars. So those in the past were twenty-five, now we're thirty. Another item is the procurement card payments for services, actually, actually, that needs to be just procurement card payment for tangible goods or materials, because we don't pay for services with our procurement card. So on section seventeen, I just need to make that clerical adjustment or clarification.
Marietta?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that thousand dollars, is that set by the state, or is that something that goes by the town?
That, this takes our internal policy. We do have a procurement card policy also that, you know, gives them the, well, it's more procedure, tells them what they can do, how they reconcile. But this is our internal policy. And we're trying to- That wasn't me, but-
Is it actually a board down here, so?
I think, because I don't think yours is-
I hope it's not sparking-
It's going to start on fire.
So that's our internal limit. We are trying to, I did add a section there, I added, is approved, the procurement card policy is approving, is approved for purchasing and paying for purchases of tangible goods and materials for the town that do not require a formal bid process, as stated in section ten. So section ten follows all the procurement limits, so I want the, you know, leave it to exempt items like travel and advertising, things that are really just a one-time thing that doesn't really require a formal quotation or bid. So I identified that a little bit more. So that's our internal policy.
And a thousand is-
Best obtainable price in the same-
Well, because I noticed when I was going through the procurement services cards a while back, you know, there was just certain departments that seemed to consistently go over the thousand, and I was just wondering if it would be easier just to have a higher limit.
Um, no, well, yes, they say yes, I say no. We're going to go back and look at the actual procurement card policy altogether. There's in some cases that we wouldn't mind a higher limit, as long as the documentation as like a purchase order was attached to it. The, the state procurement law has changed a little bit more stringent to make sure that the procurement officer is now really responsible for every purchase order that comes out of there. And so that's why we're keeping the limit at a thousand, because that's best obtainable price, where it's, you know, you do the best job to get the best price for it, where she doesn't really have to, you know, double-check all that information. So we still have to refine the actual policy, but right now, we're going to keep the limit to a thousand. That doesn't mean that we cannot come back and revise that and change that and bring it back to council.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor? Marietta, just as you're going through this, I just noticed that on page three and four of the redline version, the small purchase thresholds are zero to one thousand, one to ten thousand, and then we have five to thirty thousand, and I think the intent was that it be ten to thirty thousand.
Okay.
And that, that's paragraph two, eight, let's see.
Page three of eight?
Page, yes.
Okay.
Section ten, paragraph A, and then one, two, three show those thresholds, and they don't line up.
Oh, right.
I think that was my mistake.
Okay. So the five, where it says five to thirty should be ten to thirty, is what you're saying?
Right.
So ten to thirty, if we can make that correction.
Sorry, thanks.
Thank you. Another item that was, that we did change, too, is in the budget adjustment request on section fourteen. We added the, probably one, two, third paragraph, and I don't, I'm not looking at my redline, but the third paragraph in the bottom, it says, "The town manager has approval to transfer monies between categories." When we talk about categories, we talk about personnel, operations, and capital expenses. And that mean, and interfund transfers, budget increases, and including new projects, up to the lesser of thirty thousand dollars, or ten percent of any department budget. What we find is we bring a lot of small budget adjustments to the council, because the current policy says that everything has to go to council if it's moved from categories, oh ones to twos to threes. So if we move something in salaries to operations, we have to come to council. And so thirty thousand gives the manager that approval to do that. So that's a big, a big change on the budget adjustments.
Does that follow state procurement?
Uh-
On budget adjustments?
On budget adjustments, you still have to take anything, send it to DFA. So the DFA says if you have any of these budget transfers between inter, interfund transfers, budget increases, budget fund to fund, those still have to go to DFA. So even though he has that approval, I still have to send those to DFA for approval. But if our policy says that he does have that limit, then they'll go by our policy.
Okay.
And then, section twenty, the administrative fee charge, we added to be inclusive of authority to charge a five percent administrative fee to the enterprise fund, and a five percent of budgeted operations for any current and future multi-jurisdictional and fiscal agent agreements, is what we added in there. Just in case we do become fiscal agents for other municipalities around the area.
Does that relate to the CYFD contract?
Um, in those certain contracts, there's not an administrative fee that we can charge. And for those programs, there's like really nobody, like, I mean, they're all passed through monies through the organizations that, that do them, so we don't really have a place to charge it. I don't know how we, who would pay that fee.
The state. The grant, the grant, and almost, almost all of those grants have the, you have the authority to charge an administrative fee on them.
Right.
And this is something I brought up last year and the year before on this particular grant, because, you know, we're spending an awful lot of time on it, and we get absolutely nothing for it.
Right.
And so I would, I would say that we need to look at that and see if there can be either on top of the grant, an administrative fee we ask for, or in the grant. I hate to take it out of the grant, because it's so minimal amount of money-
Right.
-in, in what it does, but we're spending, we're paying an awful lot of money to do the state's job.
Right. So on the CYFD, I don't think that one was allowed. I think we had a, I think we brought that to council when we did the grant, and that question was asked. I think we waived, while we couldn't, the grant didn't allow it. And so I think the council at that time waived it. But I'll double-check again on CYFD, because I'm pretty sure the first time we asked them, they did not allow for a fiscal agent fee.
So my, my question is then, why can't they handle it?
Right.
And Marietta, should that not read up to five percent? So that-
Okay. Yeah, I think that may, I think that's what we probably intended to write, Rick? Yes?
Yeah, some of those are ten percent.
Okay. Um, other than that, I just highlighted the majority of the, the changes, I know, for the newly ones, there's a lot of items in there that it just talks about more of the budget, budget activities that go on throughout the year. So I'll stand for any questions on-
Thank you, Marietta. Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So I'll just start at the top. Our continuing debate over one twelfth versus two twelfth, just for clarification. Statutorily, we've got to have our one twelfth. Our goal is to try and go for two twelfths, with the understanding that that can become kind of an emergency fund, if we have the need. So in last month's budget, we had eight hundred and ninety-five thousand. That had actually been reduced down to five ninety-seven, something like that, Rick, I'm just going from memory.
Yeah.
But is that our, is that still our philosophy? That we're going to have that fudge factor, as I call it?
Yes, to have at least two twelfths.
Yes. But the, the mediated settlement between thou and thy is, is that, that's kind of our emergency-
That is correct.
Little stash.
You can't touch the one twelfth without DFA agreeing to it, which is not likely, but you can dip into the additional one twelfth that you put there.
Okay. I thought, Mayor Barone, in our conversations before we were elected, we had talked about reducing that may oral capability of signing off from sixty down to thirty. What's your feeling about that? Was that just a dream that I had, or was that a real conversation? Do you recall that, or Rick, do you?
I do recall that conversation.
Oh, good. So I'm not delusory. Very good. So what's your, what's, what's your feeling about that, Mr. Mayor?
You know what, I haven't signed off on anything, I don't think that-
I mean, does that inadvertently constrain the mayor or tie our hands in some way?
If it's controversial, it comes back to the-
I'm not sure that it is, I just want to discuss it a little bit, because we had discussed that during the campaign. And, and Councilman Peralta has-
Well, this is the reason I said that, I don't have any problem with the limits that are in, in the policy. I just said that if, if the mayor or the manager is going to sign off on a contract, that once a month, he just lets us know that he did it, and what, who it was to, and what, for whatever it was for, which is with, they still have to stay within the budget. So it's not going to be that they're going to be doing any budget busting, but at least we get the information that this took place and, and why it took place, and it helps us keep informed about what's happening. But I don't see that there's really a need to reduce the, the amount to, to, in, in most cases, those contracts would come before the council anyway, but in, in a few cases, they may need to do something immediately, in a sense, that two weeks waiting could, could hurt a project, the potholes. And, and I can see that, and I can't really put a, an example to mind right now, but I just think that having that authority doesn't necessarily mean that somebody's going to abuse it. But I, I think that as long as we're kept informed, I'm happy with it.
Yeah, and I, I want to make it clear, I don't think, I'm not implying abuse or anything like that.
I understand.
But it's, it's-
That's why I'm looking for just the reporting, then that keeps us informed.
Mm-hmm. So we're going to start the reporting?
And it cuts down, could cut down on sometimes the late nights we have.
And might I suggest that, you know, if you want to make it at the thirty, to try it out, maybe what you want to do is, and anything above, from the thirty to the sixty, must be an emergency basis. I mean, because I, I can see situations where there was a sewer leak, for example, and that's something you want to take care of right away.
Yeah.
Or a roof-
Right.
Problem, fire, TCA, for example, when the alarm system wasn't working appropriately, or, oop, can't say that on public. But there, there are certain times that, that I think, but I, I can assure you that, as I said to Councilman Peralta, I, I'm not comfortable doing any contract, so even if it's a, or a grant, even if it's a situation like where we had the deadline for the cops grant earlier, you're going to see me bring it before you, anyway.
I can appreciate that. I was just wondering if there was a seed change. And then, change orders. Another campaign issue that seemed to be in the public's eye was just unending change orders. And from this gray-collar perspective, I come in as a contractor for X amount, and I underbid everybody, and then I come back to the council two months later and say, oops, I need more dough. Now, I realize I'm not putting this in very professional terms, I'm putting it in ten-thirty PM terms. But do you know what I'm saying? So, change orders.
Councilman, I, I would, and I, and I asked Marietta and French to chime in, but the- And I, and I ask Marietta and French to chime in, but the, the understanding should be on change orders is that it's work that was not originally envisioned within the scope of services. So for example, you're putting in a sewer line, and then you find out that you're gonna have to cross over to other utilities that you didn't anticipate.
Yeah, that's the oops.
Um, and, but it should be something that is not foreseeable by us in drawing up the contract.
So, so who determines what's foreseeable and what's not? Who did, who's the judge in the oops factor?
And, well, um, when the, French?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hahn, it could be a buckle that determines that. Um, if they're excavating, they come across a, um, uh, a utility that wasn't spotted, or we didn't anticipate it being there, um, as Rick mentioned, would have to address how to deal with it. And in that case, it would constitute some kind of change order for, uh, labor and materials.
And do all change orders come before the council?
We, uh, Mr. Mayor-
I read that, and I forgot.
Who's that? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hahn, um, not, not all change orders come before the, before the mayor and council for approval. There are instances where, um, by us doing that, we would literally stop construction of waiting for approval, which could take a week or two weeks. Um, we do, we do have the authority to issue field orders, um, with the approval of the town manager. At the end of the project, there is a final adjusting change order that comes before the mayor and council, identifying all the field work orders that have been issued. Um, and, and they could range from, uh, five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. But it's, uh, to keep the project rolling.
And what, what section am I looking for here, Marietta?
Um, on sec, this is on the budget, on the budget adjustment is section twelve.
Twelve, okay.
Approval of change order and amendment, so, and, and it goes into more detail under the procurement policy under the resolution ten nineteen.
Right.
So this is like a summary, but then you have to refer to the policy, and there, there is, uh, I mean, they have to get the backup, the town manager has to approve, look at it. Procurement has to make sure that that change order is within the scope of services that was originally bid out or RFP'd out. So the limit we did was thirty, just to be consistent. I mean, that can be, I mean, if the council doesn't feel comfortable with a change order for thirty, that's, you know, easily changed.
And you would, you would still be constrained by the budget authority that's granted-
Right.
...to the project. If we didn't put it in the project, we're, we're gonna have to come back to you anyway.
Right.
But there's, there's a limitation.
Right.
You cannot increase a contract by more than ten percent. With change orders or anything else that changes the scope of work that the person bid on, that's the law. So if you add something to that contract, and it exceeds ten percent, you can't do it by change order. You gotta re-bid that section.
Okay, so maybe we should add that language from wherever that comes from into this also?
So, because what happens then is you've changed the contract in such a way that anybody else who would have had the right to bid on it, didn't get an opportunity to bid on it because you changed it. And so you can't, that limitation's in the state law. It says you have a limitation as to how much you can increase the contract before you can't do it anymore. So it's not a open-ended change order sort of thing that you can do.
Okay.
Except in the case of something that was omitted by the engineer, um, because he didn't know it was there. But even in that case, you have to be very careful because you can violate the Procurement Act by issuing a change order to change the whole scope of work. If you didn't change the scope of work, you can stay there, but if you change the scope of work by adding something, then you have to be careful. And this is something that I brought up a couple of times last year on contracts that had some change orders in there, and I says, "You're changing the scope of work, and we can't do it."
Right.
And we had to pull those contracts.
So, well-
So you gotta look at that.
We'll have to, I, I, 'cause I'm not, I'm not familiar where that is in...
Well, the, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Peralta, the question is whether to incorporate that into the budget policy. I don't think it's necessary because it's set forth by the Procurement Code. Um, I think there's a number of circumstances-
I'm just trying to make sure that what they're putting in the, in the policy doesn't violate that. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, yes, and it doesn't, because it doesn't deal with percentages in that way, but it...
Well, but I'm just saying is, in other words, if you do five change orders, that total, a twenty percent increase in the, in the contract is one thing, and if you do twenty change orders that stay under the ten percent, that's another thing. So this is where I want to make sure that we're not saying all change orders, because you're having change orders, and they're all small, we can do as many as we want. You can't.
Ma- ma- Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Peralta, um, I, I'm sorry, what I was referring to is, is there's, um, um, anytime we put out a project, it's based on unit, uh, units. So if we exceed the units, that would constitute a, a change, 'cause it, it exceeded the unit. And if there's, um, a, a change in the scope of work, um, I, I would bring that back to the mayor and council for approval, because it is outside the scope of the, the original contract.
And, and one of the things I'm looking at there is omissions by an engineer.
Yes.
Or something that was dug up, and they didn't expect it, and it wasn't in an as-built plan, and they pulled up, oh, yeah, a wire at town hall, and pulled the whole electrical panel out, something like that.
Roof replacement, and you find you need mold remediation-
Yeah.
-when you get in there, there's structural damage.
So those are real-
And you can cover some of that by doing old, alternate bid lots.
Thank you, Marietta.
So, um, I'll work with, to make sure that that is clarified, and I'm not in violation of that, ten percent. Um, any, any other questions?
So, uh, Jake, would we proceed then, if she's gonna correct that, uh, I guess that would be section twelve, does that need a correction? In, in your eyes, or it doesn't, it can be?
Mr. Mayor, no, I don't think it needs a correction. I, I think it's more a matter of finance, and any staff that's managing contracts to be aware of the Procurement Code.
Right.
Okay. So then we need, uh, what is the wishes then on I, resolution fourteen thirty budget policies?
Yeah, move to approve resolution fourteen thirty budget policies.
We have a motion to have-
Fiscal year fourteen fifteen.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Can I add to, to include those two changes that we talked about? Okay. Yes?
As amended.
Okay, thank you. I don't know what I'm supposed to say, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all proven.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
So go to J, resolution fourteen thirty-one, capital improvements and community grants. Mr. Brown?
Um, I tried to make this really, uh, color-coded and easy to read, just to show you whatever changes were, uh, done from the May twenty-seventh meeting. And I do need to make a note, um, the COPS grant that, the ju, the judge, the chief presented before, I don't have that in there, so whenever we're doing a final approval, I'd like to include that into the community grants on this form. And I wasn't sure, he said sixty-seven, but the amend, the agenda says sixty-one, so I'll just clarify that. So just to briefly go over, this, this has already probably been presented to you, this is probably the fourth time. The items in blue are the only things that really happened. What happened is I projected, or departments projected, they were gonna spend this, this money on capital projects, and it didn't happen, so we're just carrying over the, over the money. So if you look at, uh, the first page where it's, just gives you the summary, the next page, if you just look at Fund Fifty, Facilities Improvement, you'll see the blue, those are the carryover projects. Can you see the colors in your, you can, right? Okay. Um, everything else remains the same from the previous, uh, meetings. On Fund Fifty-One, the only blue items are the Eco Phase, uh, Eco Park Project, uh, we increased that carryover money because there was a contract that didn't fulfill its requirements, so we just carried over the money. And the same thing with relocation of communities, of the communication center, we still had some, uh, invoices that were paid, so that brought that one down. On the airport, the items in blue is the snow removal equipment, the original, uh, presentation had more money in there, we paid that, that, uh, payment just in the last few, few days, Mayor. And we got that out, and I have, uh, actually contacted the individual. The runway design, the same thing, we thought we were gonna spend more money, so these are just the carryover amounts that changed. And we pay, we'll be expensing one item under the construction phase one, the fee estimate for, um, for the engineers' next proposal on the design of the airport. Fund Fifty-Four, vehicle replacement, no changes. Uh, Fund Fifty-Six, that changed quite a bit. I had a grant carryover and a town match carryover, but coordinating with planning, they only have a balance of seventeen-five that they owe on this artist affordable housing project. And on Fund Fifty-Nine, where we have all the streets projects, these are pretty much all of the budget adjustments that we just did, like, the first meeting in June, so I had to incorporate those in the carryovers. And...
Excuse me one second, and this is not for you, Marietta, but, uh, Rick, what's the status on, on the, 'cause I haven't heard anymore on, on the artist affordable housing? Have we had any, I guess they didn't get the money for this year, right?
They didn't get the tax credits, right? And we were encouraged by MFA to, uh, rework that package, that they thought it had credibility, but, uh, didn't make the points, mostly because it needed more contribution. It was on private property, so that held it back.
Okay. So we're looking at that again to, for next year?
For the next cycle.
Okay.
We'll see, get together with them and rework it, and see what we can do. Find a different location, perhaps.
We're still looking at about sixty units, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Um, fifty, Fund Eighty-One, the water and sewer projects, uh, just a carryover for La Posta Sewer changed a different amount, and then we added Bertha Road and Sewer, that was at the last meeting. And then we added, um, and I actually need to correct this title, 'cause it's actually the landfill acquisition fund, Fund Eighty-Five. We included after the landfill board meeting, the, the amount of money that we do have available for the project, and we've budgeted for the cell, land self, landfill construction for the cells three B and four. I just need to make that correction on that title. And then the next one is the community grants. Really, all we changed on that was, under community sick, indigent, and public welfare, we added an additional amount to bring that to one twenty-four, and zeroed out the state library grant aid because they needed to expend that money, or else they were gonna lose it. So these are the changes that have happened. The only ones that I may foresee are, uh, the town hall drive improvements. I had gotten a, uh, estimate amount to pay them out before the end of the fiscal year. I don't know if we're gonna be able to get that, but if it is, it's gonna be a little bit less, so that will just be reflected on the ending numbers, uh, July thirty-first. But other than that, no, no other projects will be added, except for the one that, uh, chief presented, 'cause I didn't-
Just tonight?
Yeah, was that one tonight, so I'll put that in the community grants under police, if approved with amendments. So, uh, I stand for any questions?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay.
As amended.
Okay, thank you.
So, no, see no other further discussion, all proven.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
You'll go to K, resolution fourteen thirty-two, annual operating budget. Mr. Brown, uh, this is a public hearing?
Good.
So open the public hearing. I want to make sure we do that.
Okay. Do I go ahead and just go with presentation, and then, okay. Um, so you will have, you have the total budget. I'm just gonna go over, um, there's a two-page document, it's a short budget presentation. I'm just gonna go over, um, just a little summary. Uh, if you're there, it says where the money comes from. Our, our revenue sources this year equals sixty-three million, two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand, sixteen dollars. And fifteen million, or twenty-three point eight percent of that is of carryover money. And that carryover money mainly is from capital project carryover, uh, debt service reserves that we can't spend, um, just fund balances from projects that haven't been done, so, and then general fund also. Also, state share taxes is four point nine million. Agency fund brings in approximately fourteen thousand. Municipal taxes are obviously biggest revenue source, along with our charges for services. Municipal taxes at eight point two million. Charges for services, six point five million. Fines and fortisures, one hundred and ninety-two thousand. Other miscellaneous receipts, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand. And our grants and bonds this year, a total of twenty-seven million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, ni- three ninety-eight, for a total amount of sixty-three million plus.
Councilmember Peralta?
Uh, just for clarification for the audience, uh, the charges for services are really our enterprise funds, correct?
Yes, enterprise funds, and then the smaller ones that we have in general fund, library, youth and family center. Yes, but mainly enterprise funds. Water and sewer, landfill. Um, on the other, the next page is just an expenditure by summary, by fund type, actually. So broken down, general fund, and you can see our, um, executive department, all the departments within general fund. And you can see the bigger ones, our police at two million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand. Finance is at eight hundred and thirteen, I wish I had all that money, but the majority of it goes to, uh, the insurances, 'cause I carry that in my budget. Um, the other big one is facilities, at one point three million. And, uh, streets, eight hundred and forty-five, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, um, and just down the line. Uh, so a total general fund budget of ten million, five seventy-four, nine forty-seven. And nothing really changed from the May meeting to this on general fund. Uh, agency funds are just money that we owe back to people, a hundred and eighty-two in there. Enterprise funds, nine million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand. Capital projects is twenty-nine million, six ninety-eight. Debt service funds, nine seventy, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand. Special revenues, three point nine million. So a total expenditure budget of fifty-four million, seven thirty-five, four hundred and seventeen, separated out in those different areas. Just to give you a little hit, whatever big changes that happened from May twenty-seventh to this budget right now, um, the first budget that I prepared were actual revenues and expenditures through May thirty-first, so I estimated out for April, May, and June. With this figure here now, I had actuals for all the way through May thirty-first and June, a lot of information with our deadlines, I had that information to project what we're gonna, this is not the final, but this is close, the closest to the final once we close the books. So based on what the departments had projected, and what they've spent and really need to spend for June, uh, it looks like we increased our, uh, additional reserve fund by two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars, from the first time presented to right now. Uh, the other things that changed are pretty much the beginning fund balances. Those will still change, but not drastically, hopefully, uh, when we close the books. And, uh, I think, uh, community grants changed a little bit, and we added that one big project for the landfill. And other than that, there was really no other changes after we've met from the May twenty-seventh meeting. So it's more, uh, formality, 'cause we've already met, and met, and you guys are probably sick of me, and so just, this is the final on expenditures, with the exception of any little carryover capital projects that may differ between the actual payments in the last few days that we processed.
So Marietta, how close are we to that second twelve?
Uh, we're actually, we- We're actually, we have now eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, one oh two, so we're just roughly nine...
Half a day?
Eight thousand, do you know?
Half a day, literally.
And...
Morning?
I mean, based on...
So, everyone gets off early Friday, just June thirtieth.
And, and based on, I mean, I, I use the department's projections, and you know, partly is the finance department, short staff on procurement and trying to get everything done, but partly them saying, you know, I'm going to spend, so, I'm still, I'm, I think that's even going to probably go up with the final numbers, just because I still have a lot of open purchase orders and closeout deadlines, and a lot of people, you know, were sort of not medium, so, try to get as close as I can, but the final budget, this will be, we got our interim approval for the May budget that we did. We'll close out the books, and I'll send in the final budget with all these resolutions that you're approving right now, and have actual numbers, and then that will come back to you. I think they usually get that certified in August, first week in September. I'll bring it back one more time by state, the statute that says I have to bring it back to you one more final time. But, it looks good.
Mr. Mayor, in the purpose of, in the, yeah, for full disclosure, normally you would be approving also the personnel schedule and any of the salary adjustments, and we have not included that at this time, because the money is in the budget for the compensation plan as envisioned by the prior council. However, to prepare that resolution, we felt we didn't have enough detail for it to be defensible as to how we arrived at those figures. So, Miranda has provided some backup documentation, and we're looking at that right now. We didn't get that till this afternoon, unfortunately.
So, and like you said, it is all included. We just need to make sure that we have that clear, cut, and clean. We'll probably bring that back, even if it's a July meeting, because we won't implement it till the first full pay period in July.
So, this is a public hearing? So, anybody want to speak for or against it? If not, anybody awake back there? We'll go ahead and wake up here. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilproctor?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Marietta, and Rick, I've got a question. Your budget doesn't balance.
No? Because my revenues exceed my...
You have sixty-three million dollars in revenues, and you're only spending fifty-four. Where's the other nine?
Okay, so the other nine just sits out here on the ending balance. So, if you see seven, one million, seven in general fund, there's eight hundred and eighty-one in reserve, eight seventy-five in additional reserve. These fund balances are just remainder that weren't budgeted, like lodgers tax. If we get more, we're going to have to probably come back and look at how much that is.
They're reserve funds.
They're reserve funds, yes.
You need to put them in your budget.
Actually, I never, oh, I don't usually ever budget my reserves.
You gotta balance your books, and you have to show us where those monies are. You know, they're, they're in funds.
Right.
And they're not going to be expended because they're required.
Right.
So, but you need to show them carrying over and where they're at.
So, that eight million?
That balances your balance sheet.
Right.
It doesn't do your profit and loss, but it takes care of your balance sheet.
So, are you saying to zero out these funds? I mean, I don't, these are all reserve requirements that stay, like debt service, so they just stay in the fund balance. They're not budgeted.
I understand that, but you need to show them on your balance sheet.
Anything else, council? There she is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I'm second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Pedalta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Concha?
Yes.
So, we'll go on to, thank you, Marietta.
Thank you, thank you for all your patience in this whole budget process, and your input, and your questions, and everything else.
Thank you.
You're the bomb, Marietta.
So, go on to, in ten, town managers report, status of the Echo Park locker rooms, Mr. Bellis?
At this time, I would like to call our staff forward, who have been working diligently on this, to get this back up here, as well as Mr. French. And I think we're all in agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No spots.
Marietta, are these hers?
No.
Marietta?
Somebody left them.
Okay, I'll tee out.
Those are the house, those are the house glasses.
Lost and found.
Okay.
Go ahead, gentlemen.
My name is Pete French, Mr. Mayor, council members, and I represent the TAO Sports Alliance, and with, in the last several weeks and month, we've been working with Rick and Councilman Hahn, and Steve Kennebeck, and Julie Scancy, and Wayne Rutherford, in coming up with a plan to make the locker rooms work, and work within a, the finance of the money that we think we have. And what you see before you is a modular structure that's going to fit between, position between field two and three, right next to the existing, I'll call it the sun shade where the, where the bathrooms are. And Wayne Rutherford did all the CAD drawings on this, and we think that we can make all of this work, and also add the sun shades over the existing benches for the players and the referees. And then, we have to correct some, some drainage. And then, the last thing will be, on this particular wish list, will be a press box of one sort, and we haven't fully defined that, because we don't have all final numbers for all of these yet, and we need the permission to continue moving forward on this. But every, everyone is all in concert on this plan here. Maybe a few tweaks as we go along, as we find out, one aspect may be more expensive than another, but it'll be a pitch roof similar to what that existing structure has right there.
I'd just like to say, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, this has been a progress that, a project that's been long in coming, and one of the most difficult parts of it has been getting consensus on, on first, what, the first priority of what we do with that settlement money is, and then what does it look like? So, in just the last couple of weeks, we've come a, a long way in, in, in agreeing everyone unanimously that locker room's the first top priority, and then the configuration of the locker rooms, how they get built out. So, that's been the biggest sticking point with this project so far, is, is getting consensus on what we do. So, I'm, I'm very happy that we've, we've gotten to this point. This isn't the final drawing. This is a kind of a draft that Wayne put together for us. Just so I have something to present to the folks that do the modular buildings, and they'll come up with a final of structure. It'll be certified, it'll have all the code, it'll be built to code, to New Mexico code, it'll be inspected, pre-inspected before it's even brought to the site. The additional costs in, involved in this are the preparing the site to install the modular structure, the running the utilities, putting in ADA ramps, that, that type of stuff. We don't yet know what the cost of this is going to be. The, the original structure that Mr. Yarvich described was much more basic than this, and it was about ninety thousand dollars. So, until we get this to the, and it, another thing to say is, we, we, we the town are now a...
CES.
We, we have CES, the Cooperative Educational System Procurement System in place. We're now a member, or I don't know the right terminology, but we can use CES, and there are three companies that do modular buildings, so we will be able to present this to three different companies and get the best price for what we're looking for. So, I'm happy about that as well.
And then Wayne, Wayne Rutherford, as you probably know, is also, or I think, you may be wrong in this, the only contractor in TAO that is CES qualified or licensed, and he's done lots of other things for, he's doing a big one in Santa Fe now, and has done some things here too.
So, we've got a plan for the building that we can present to the CES companies that do modular buildings, and we have a in-town local contractor with a very good reputation who's a CES vendor. So, I, I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that we can get this project going at long last.
Can I ask a question real quick, Mr. Mayor? Sorry.
Well, my question is, how does a contractor fit into this thing without having a bid?
He is a pre-approved vendor with CES, so his, his rates are vetted by that, by, by CES. His work has been, I guess, a...
So, our agreement would actually be with Mr. Rutherford, and then he would almost subbid through CES the other parts of the project.
Right.
So, he serves the general and does the site prep and installation.
Okay, thank you.
Based on these locker rooms, and I mean, that's something that just hasn't been discussed, which I know they're needed, but what about utilization? Who gets to use them? Is that going to be reserved for NCAA? Is that going to only be reserved for the high school?
No.
I mean, I'm looking for integration for everybody.
It is, very much. And I actually had a conversation this morning with a couple of the girls on the, on the high school soccer team, and said, we hope to get this through, and they said, that would make us so happy and for the teams coming up. But our use of this is, the, any team that comes up and plays on a scheduled match will have the ability to use it if they want to. It's not, no, it's not just you, NCAA matches. This will ensure that they'll continue, I'll say, as much as we can, is they'll ensure that they'll continue to return, but in talking with, you know, Adam State and Jeremy Fishbine for the Lobos, I said, this, it's critical to get this, and they're just really, he's really excited about it that we'll, we'll have this hopefully in place going into next spring.
Because the other thing I'd like to point out, just with regards to this, I'm talking about not just utili, utilization of the locker rooms, but utilization of the fields. I want to see youth football on that, on that soccer field.
Youth football?
Youth football. And the reason being is because they're utilizing just TAO's high school, and it's an extremely huge backlog over the course of two days for, to try to get all those kids in on, on, on a plane time. I get hit with the question every single year for football, because my little guy plays football, is why is Echo Park not open to us? They've always been told it's just soccer only, and I said, nope, it's a multi-use sports facility, that's what it was envisioned as, and will be used for. So, I mean, I think we need to get that. Last time I had talked, it was with Joe Israel, that was a while back. But this up and coming, I really want to see more of our youth athletics start to use that field as well, too, and not just so designated as soccer, because come winter, now you have soccer teams inside basketball gyms, and I have a huge problem with that, too. So, just if we can get more integration of our youth off the streets and playing some type of sport, I'm all for that.
Well, I guess, going back to the budget that Councilman Peralta brought up, when I saw that it didn't quite balance, and I thought there was about nine million dollars, and I thought we could easily build the locker room and a couple of our fields.
The couple of fields.
But apparently, it's, it's in reserve and we can't touch it, so. But understanding what you're saying, and that's our goal, to, to not only, not have it as, and I know some people won't agree with me, but not as soccer-centric, if you will, so we get as much utilization of that field as we can.
And again, I think the, the message that needs to be echoed out there is that it wasn't built specifically for soccer, I mean, carries the FIFA rating, I mean, there was a huge emphasis behind soccer on it, but that public fund, that's everybody paid for this field.
Councilmember Gonzalez, I don't think, the field's not really marked for football.
Well, when you're playing youth, when, when you're playing youth sport, it's just getting them on the field. Thank you.
Do you have a couple of questions? What kind of impact, you know, we put this out there? Somebody's going to have to clean it, somebody's going to have to maintenance it? What budget is going to impact it, where's that money coming from?
We have a contract, so it'll, it'll come under that, it's, I understand.
Are they going to do it for the same price they're doing it?
Well, we'll, no...
That's our intent and goal, yes.
I don't see that there's going to be that much extra. I mean, depending on the usage, it may, there may be more work in cleaning it.
And today, what type of hours are we supposed to be keeping in the park?
We do the same hours at Echo Park as we do the other two parks. It's eight, eight o'clock in the morning to eight PM.
I just wondered, because I'd get there at six and the rest of them are open. I don't know if they get left open all night?
No, I don't think so, Mayor. But, okay, I'll check.
I've been there at six o'clock.
Okay.
I go and walk the park, and they're open.
At Baca?
No, at...
At Echo Park?
Okay.
At the Echo Park.
I will.
And I've been there at nine o'clock at night, and they're open.
Hmm, okay.
So, I, I don't know, I just letting you know, I hate for it to be vandalized.
Right.
It's too beautiful a place, and again, it's one of those...
That's good to know, I'll, I'll check. I drive by there in the morning, but there's usually, by the time they're, they would be open anyway. Okay, that's good to know.
There's three or four other ladies that walk there, and I mean, they just walk right in the restroom. It's nice that they're open, but it's six o'clock in the morning, I hope they didn't get left open for the night before.
Okay, I'll check into it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure your mic's on.
Maybe, maybe it, oh.
Oh, it's that cord.
He's about to get buzzed. Don't touch it. Yeah, I gave him the night off.
So, it's probably not on, but hopefully it can get picked up, so.
Mr. Mayor, so what we'd be asking you for at this time is that we be allowed, now that we are a CES member, to take this draft proposal and put it out through CES to get three quotes that would include the, the modular, and then the site prep and the installation. And we will come back to you when we have those quotes.
Are we up for action on this, or is this just direction? It's direction, right?
Direction, yes.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and direct staff to go ahead and proceed with moving forward on getting the RFP proposal going through CES.
Formalizing.
Formalizing the process.
And then that'll come back to us for a vote. So, again, Mr. Bellis, you get that? Doug?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And if I may, this is not a final drawing, so if you hang on to it, please don't share it, because it'll probably change after.
You can take mine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you for waiting up.
No problem. I'll be up early, maybe not at the park, but on a bicycle.
Thank you, Mr. French.
Thank you all.
So, most matters, I get to visit all these places that I didn't get to visit before since I live in town now, so, you know, I get to visit all.
Good.
Matters from the mayor and council. Next items, A, appointment of the lodger's tax advisory board, and consideration and possible approval of appointments to the lodger's tax board. I did hand out a letter to each one of you.
Did you get that?
The lodger's tax advisory board? That's it, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, um, under...
For consideration?
Under Judy, is she eligible to sit on the lodger's taxes as a city councilor?
As a town resident, Mr. Bellis?
But as an elected?
Jake?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, that question has been raised, and, you know, the, I, because this is an advisory board, and is making only recommendations to the governing body, it's, I don't view it as, even though it's created by statute, I don't really view it as any different than any committee or board that you appoint as, appoint yourselves to, to participate, and then bring recommendations back to the council to vote on. So, in other words, that, there's no direct conflict of interest that I can articulate that would preclude a council member from sitting on the, on the lodger's tax advisory board.
I guess...
I think that it would be appropriate to disclose the fact that one sits on... the fact that one sits on the Lodgers Tax Advisory Board when a recommendation is being submitted.
And for me, Mr. Mayor, it's not so much the one with the council, but would it not, I mean, because as a city council, you have full overview of any of the advisory boards, wouldn't it be much better served by somebody else within that area? Because Judy will give her opinion irregardless of sitting on that advisory or not. I don't know how you feel about it.
Well, is there any decisions that I'd have to recuse myself from?
No.
Again, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Cantu, I don't believe you'd have to recuse yourself. I think it's a matter of making sure that you disclose the fact. I don't believe Councilman Gonzalez is necessarily raising the issue of whether it's precluded as a conflict. It's whether the point of the advisory board is to bring an outside perspective that doesn't already exist on the council. And that's a, you know, that's a decision for you all to consider outside of the sort of legal parameters that I can discuss.
And for me, I think it's just more because of her free input as a counselor right now would, I mean, again, just going out to get a better, more broad view outside of what already exists within, within the confines of this council.
I just happen to go to that meeting anyway, so I've been going since last fall, and it's like, very informative. But you guys can...
So, these are, these are the people that I bring forward? And I guess we can read them for the record, and then either approve them or disapprove. So, for the Lodgers Tax Advisory Board, Chris Smith, representing the lodging establishment, Tina Harlow, representing lodging, Judy Cantu, Taos resident, Cisco Muvara, I guess?
Muvara.
Is that the pronunciation? I just wanted to make sure. Representing tourist businesses. And Carol Williams, representing tourist businesses. So, again? Do you agree with him?
Mr. Mayor, I might also add that we intend to, we've informed a number of the committees that are out there that deal with marketing, that it is our intention going forward to consolidate things and to use the Lodgers Tax Advisory Board as the official board dealing with tourism and marketing issues, and to work with our new marketing and tourism director. And that, in speaking with the town attorney, there's nothing in the ordinance that prevents adding committees or work groups of people from the community to work on different aspects of marketing and tourism. But we will be disbanding what used to be known as the Tuesday morning work group, which really wasn't sanctioned in any way in reporting directly back to the town council.
So, do we have a motion to adopt these?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Can I vote on it? I'll second it.
I'll, so, I'll second.
We've got a second by Councilman Peralta. Any, is there further discussion?
Yes, I just want to thank the citizens for stepping up to the plate. You know, our, our citizens do so much to help us out. And so now, one, two, three, four, five. If we exclude Judy, here's four more stepping up to the plate to go to more meetings and try and do their level best. So, I'm grateful. We have a lot of citizen participation. This is just one example. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hahn.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, as long as, I'm sure there are a bunch of people out there watching us at this time of the night.
I'm pretty sure.
With great interest. The two remaining groups to be appointed and are planning and zoning, and almost everybody that was interested in every other group was interested in that, so we wanted to leave that to last. But the other one we're having difficulty with, so if any of the council people or anybody that's out there is interested is the Historic Commission. And it's very narrowly defined that you have to live within the district or own property within the district. And we have some great people that are really interested, architects, historic preservation people, arts people, that were not able to fit in into that. So, if by the next meeting we do not have anybody, and it's been 90 days, we will probably come back with a recommendation that the ordinance be modified. And town attorneys indicated there's nothing in the state statutes. It's strictly a local ordinance. But to give us more flexibility, and there are some tremendously talented people that are interested in that group. It's just the requirements are so narrow, it's very tough to fill.
I'd like to know when that was changed, because it didn't used to be that way.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just for clarification, the Land Use Development Code reads that two members shall be property owners within the Historic Overlay District. Two shall be members within the town limits, and then the fifth member can be an at-large member.
Because it, it used to be that two members of the Planning Commission were on the Historical Review Commission. And then you had two people who were from the historical district, and then you had the fifth one at large. But that seems to have changed someplace down the line. I'm just curious as to when that was done.
I don't know the answer to that, councilor.
Because they would, they would sit actually on the Finding and Zoning Commission and take issues of historical significance through the commission as well. And it's just curiosity.
We can look into that, if you would, Jake.
I will.
Thank you. So...
I think we need to change the ordinance as well.
And so next, B, is mayor's update. The only thing that really that have to update you on is we did go before the county commission to ask for the use of the old county courthouse. And basically during that presentation, Mr. Bellis made the presentation, and at the end of it, it basically said, "Put a proposal together with figures and where the money could come from to help facilitate with the elevator and how we would manage it." They would consider it. At the end of the day, that's the way it was left. So, just an update on that. Other than that, it's the only other thing they have. The Ancianos program, I guess I did have another one. The Ancianos program is moving forward. The county is basically taking over the Ancianos, and they will be coming to ask for the use of the, or a lease or some aspect of that for the building that the town owns that the Ancianos uses. Next item is councils' reports. I don't know if anybody's, Councilor Han?
The, at the landfill board last week, we voted to have a minimum charge of $5, minimum charge for a load. So, think of me going over in Tina's Taurus with a couple of bags. Not a big deal. Charges other than that are the same, but we had a need. We're going to try the $5. If we have to reduce it, we will. Want to keep an eye out for illegal dumping. No intergovernmental council meeting, which I've never attended now since the old Walmart, SuperBox days. And so, that's very disappointing. If our collective governments can't start getting together, I'm going to have to get counseling. And finally, the elders' council. This is really important. So, the elders at Ancianos and Taos Retirement Village, and hopefully Taos Pueblo would like the mayor and a counselor or two counselors, along with one or two commissioners, to meet with them once a month, and the location will rotate. So, on July 8th at 1:00 PM, we will be meeting at Ancianos. And of course, we have a town council meeting that day, so none of us will be there. But I think Commissioner Romero and maybe Blankenhorn will be there. So, the elders are trying to set this up. It's a very relaxed thing. It's just a roundtable discussion. There's no agenda. There's no action items. We just have to be careful that we don't end up with that inadvertent quorum. And the hope is to simply have a commissioner or two, a counselor or mayor or two, and meet with the elders once a month. Contacts there are Bonnie Golden at, and maybe Renee, if you could put this in the notes, so when we get the notes, the counselors and mayor will have these contact numbers. Contact for Taos Retirement Village is Bonnie Golden at 779-8975. And at the county, it's...
Councilmember, I'm sorry, who was the contact? Or what was she the contact for?
I can't hear you.
What was Bonnie, is it Goldman?
Bonnie Golden.
Golden?
At Taos Retirement Village. And then Mike Trujillo at Ancianos. And Sean Duran out at Taos Pueblo. 758-8626. Sean's got to check with her elders over there and probably the government, but she's feeling like this would be a really good thing to do. So, the process will simply be Mike, Bonnie, or Sean will call a couple of us and see if we can attend at such and such time and place. Elders will direct her. It's not our meeting, it's their meeting. And I'm going to say, no politicizing, you know? It's their meeting, unless they want politicizing.
And counselor, just keep in mind that they like, like Andrew, that you might like to dance, because they love to dance over there.
I've got two left feet, Mary.
So, very excited about this. Thanks.
Anything else from the council?
Two things. One is the DH Lawrence Ranch should be opening up for visitations starting next week, hopefully. We're waiting for a budget to be approved, but it'll be on Mondays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. I talked to you last time, and it'll be on Tuesday, but they changed that to Monday, from 10:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. I'll get you a memo out as soon as we get a definite on that. The second thing is that the first meeting that I'll be attending for the hospital will be tomorrow night. So, the next council meeting, I'll try to give you an update on some of the things that I find out, get you informed of. I do have some questions based on the budget, but I can't toward avenues to answer.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, in regards to Councilman, Councilwoman Cantu's earlier question in regards to that email about $37 million that came to New Mexico, that is the pilt or payment in lieu of tax money, which goes to the counties. So, we as municipalities do not receive that. And that's in exchange for revenue lost by public lands owned by the federal government, in our case, the Forest Service and BLM.
And I'm presuming nobody wants to stay for a 90-day report to hear me tell you what you did.
I read it.
Pick up your newspaper, and I've emailed it to you.
I read it, but, yeah, no, Rick, you should do it.
Actually read it.
Rick, do it.
Read it already.
If you guys do it, I'm, I gotta, I gotta be gone by 5:00, man.
I think you're outnumbered.
All right. Do we have a motion to?
So moved.
We need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Out of favor, signify by sign aye.
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 No. Well, we need to hear Mr. Bellis's report.
We took his thunder away. All right, next time.